There he is.
Sir, I think we're just waiting on Commissioner Locke.
Yeah, I was just looking at the list here, see who is here. Okay, we'll give her another minute or so. There she is. Okay, Commissioner Locke, you want to just confirm that you're ready to go? Ready to go? Okay, great, all right. All right, I will call the planning commission meeting of July thirteenth to order. Want to welcome everybody today. Can we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Allen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Bolton.
Here.
Commissioner Dells.
Here.
Commissioner Locke.
Here.
Chair LaPage.
Here, okay. All right. So the first item on our agenda today is the consent agenda. Oh, public appearances, excuse me. So is there anyone from the public that would like to address the planning commission? At this time about on matters of municipal concern which are not on the agenda tonight? See, so I see Chris Mitchell, you have your hand up, you want to go ahead?
Hello, hi, I'm Chris Mitchell, represent Esperanza Carmel. With the real estate company looking to develop the hole in the ground next to the post office. I think widely known in the community is the pit, but which we call the Orico Plaza project. If you just quickly take the opportunity to thank Gil Liam for her service and welcome Erin Allen. I just want to take two minutes and write you a quick update on our process. As I know it's important to many, if not most people in the town. In conjunction with our local architects, well drunk and dos, we submitted our revised plans for the Rico Plaza project last week. We're hoping to hold by the planning commission ideally in August. Ideally, it will be the first of two meetings for the projects. The first one to be for the general design with a further meeting to incorporate any feedback and update and complete the plans. We're looking to receive any feedback on these plans ahead of time if possible. Either from the planning commissioners or from the public so that we can actively consider this and respond. Our goal is to make sure that the next planning meeting we have is as productive as possible for all parties. And ideally looking to save the planning commissioners some time in what we know already is quite a lengthy item on their agenda. We've received some feedback already in the last few days having submitted the plans last week. The best way to get in contact with us is by email to contact at esperanzacarmel.com or you can call the office. On eight three one two five zero seven six six nine. That was it. Thank you very much for your time.
You're muted, Michael. That mute gets me every time. I just wanted to make a brief comment that the commissioners, I don't believe can make comments ahead of time on this. Has to be done in a public meeting, but the public certainly can't. Carol, you have your hand up, go ahead.
Yes, I do. Thank you. I just wanted to thank Chris Mitchell for that information and just to say that. Our group at Carmel Preservation Association is very much in favor of. Not the modern design, but getting back to the Tudor design on the south side. And we've been asking residents and visitors who come to the farmer's market as well as others about this. And the overwhelming majority agree with that, that assessment or that opinion. I think we can all agree that we can thank them for hanging in there and. And we hope to get some resolution to this quickly. It costs them a lot of money each time they have to come back. We don't want to settle on something, of course, that we're not happy with, but I think that they have shown a lot of cooperation and patience with us. And we do all want to get rid of this dreadful pit. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. I see another hand up there. I can only see the phone number, so I don't, I don't know your name. If you want to unmute yourself, there you go.
Good afternoon, Chair LaPage and planning commissioners. This is Christie Hollenbeck from the Stop Cell Towers and Carmel Neighborhoods Group. I just wanted to say that we've been heartened at the response we've received about our efforts to provide actionable information to the residents. The planning commission members and the city council about drafting a wireless ordinance to protect our community. We were successful in hiring a qualified expert on the subject, Andrew Campanelli. And he has provided a best practices ordinance that would allow the city to be in control of where the cell towers should be located. We have also invested in time for him to provide firsthand information to the commission. And answer questions that they may have. It is hoped that this will take place when the subject. When the subject is at a future planning commission meeting and if necessary for the city council prior to approval to the ordinance. We respect the need of staff attorneys to have more time to draft their ordinance, but we hope that they are taking our draft into consideration in the process. We request one month to review their draft after it is submitted as we will need time to review it. Due to the complexity of the material. We also request as much notice as possible before the next wireless meeting. And we want to thank the city for your dedication to making this a thorough process and to the residents who are supporting this endeavor. Endeavor which is of critical importance to the future of Carmel. Thank you.
Thank you, Chrissy. Okay, is there anyone else in the public that would like to address the planning commission? On matters which are not on our, I see our agenda tonight. So I see Neil Cruz's hand up. Neil, go ahead. Just need to, you need, Neil, you need to unmute yourself. Down at the bottom of the screen there on the left.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael. I sounded great, just silent there, didn't I?
Yeah, Neil, and Neil, back up from your microphone just a little bit. You got a nice booming voice, so we want to make sure we can hear it nice and clear.
How's that, Brandon? You think that's okay?
That's better, thank you.
That's good. Thanks, gentlemen. So just, just comments on what I see going on right now in Carmel. And one of the comments is that I know Carol and I with the Carmel Preservation Association, we have seen a huge percentage of residents. That are really not in favor of the designs that we refer to as modern design. Not modern design as in the Frank Lloyd Wright house is a modern design, but square rectilinear, you know. We've, we've gone through a lot of work to define this, this modern that really doesn't seem to fit with us in Carmel. But in with the pit, I just wanted to say. What I think is obvious, this, this project has become the cornerstone of a debate in Carmel by the sea. And if it had gone as the previous design had been, the dirt dire design, I would have considered. At that point, Dolores would have become a modern street in Carmel. I had felt it would have been all over at that point in time. So now we are getting a response from people, I guess they did a survey or Chris did a survey. We're seeing very similar results to what we have seen where we're getting close to eighty percent of the residents. Really don't want a big square white box on the corner there. What do we do? This is putting, we're putting the client in, in between a fight between two parties. It appears to be the city or the planning commissioners versus the residents. I know I shouldn't say things like that. Nobody wants to hear things like that, but I'm just trying to, isn't, isn't that what's going on, you guys? Because what he's trying to do now, even with the current design, it looks to me like he bent a little bit and came back to monitor just, just hoping that he can get maybe a couple of yeses. So that he can plant his feet in the ground and begin to develop this design. But I just want to sort of say the obvious, the residents are really making themselves clear. And it seems like we're putting him in a bad place. He's either got to go with a, you know. It seems I hear people saying they want to go back towards the earth dire design. He's either gotta go there. Or he's got to go with the residents and either way, if he goes to the residents, he doesn't have the planning commission support and vice versa. So I'm just bringing this up as an observation. Don't want to go any further than that. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Norton, would you like to make some comments? You need to unmute yourself. Mr. Norton, need to unmute yourself down at the bottom of your screen on the left. There you go, you go.
Good afternoon, commission members and planning staff. As you know, my name is Graham Norton. I listened with great interest to Chris Mitchell and it reminded me that. I've been a resident of Carmel for about three years now. And unfortunately, the pit has been a feature of Dolores for as long as I've been here. The Monarches gentleman must have the patience of Job. Most businessmen would, I'm sure have walked away by now. I corresponded with Mr. Pastor in support of the Tudor style option on the table at the moment. As an aside, whatever induced the Tudor dynasty in the fifteen hundreds to place. The most perishable construction component on the outside, we shall never know. Anyhow, let's wrap this up once and for all and identify the majority of the local residents wish the Tudor style to be granted. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else in the public would like to? Address the planning commission on items which are not on our agenda tonight? Okay, I don't see any other hands up. We will move on with the agenda. I don't see any announcements on our agenda. We, so the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. So items on the consent agenda are routine in nature and do not require discussion or independent action. Members of the commission or the public may request that items be pulled for questions or individually to discuss those. We have two items on the agenda tonight, those item number one are the minutes from the planning commission. June eighth regular meeting and then the monthly report which we get on the building permit activity. So there's two items. So is there, are there any commissioners that would like either one of those items pulled or have any questions? Okay, don't see anybody raising their hand. Are there any members from the public that would like any of those items pulled for discussion or have any questions? Okay, I don't see any hands going up. Okay, in that case, I will make a motion that we adopt items number one and two on the consent agenda tonight. Okay, the motions were made to adopt items number one and two on the consent agenda. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Ellen?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolton?
Yes.
Commissioner Dells?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Chair LaPage?
Yes, consent agenda is approved. Okay, we have a couple of orders of business tonight.
Mr. Chair, could I, could I interject?
Yes, go ahead.
And make a request of you as the chair, you have the authority to deviate from the agenda that was approved. We had a little bit of a snafu last night at the city council meeting with the noticing. And so the city council meeting is actually going to take place tonight at five o'clock. One of the items on there, the main item is actually one of Marty's items. And so in order for her to be able to walk out of our offices into the chambers and do an item at five o'clock, I would request. A slight change in the agenda that we, and I will just share this really quickly on the screen so the rest of the commission can see this. I did send this to you ahead of time, but I want to, we need to get your approval for it. So the way it would go is we'll do one half of the orders of business to nominate the vice chair. We'll go through the public hearings and shuffle them. So Marty's item, which was originally item number six can go first. Then Marty can leave our offices physically, go into the chambers and do her item with the city council. Well, then do Evan's item and Surae's item, and hopefully that'll give enough time for Marty to wrap up her item in the chambers. And then we'll have her items eight, nine at the end of the public hearings and then we'll do orders of business part two. The item I want to talk about after that with the option of if Marty's not back in time, perhaps pulling orders of business number two up to fill some more time. So if with your permission and hopefully the blessing of the rest of the commission will have a bit of a fluid, a bit fluid of an agenda this evening. But it's for a good reason because the city council got adjourned to tonight instead of last night.
Okay, I don't think that causes a problem for any members of the commission. I hope it doesn't cause any problems for any members of the public. It's a little bit of a switch up in some of the public hearing times, but. Is there anybody that has any concerns about that in the public that causing Commissioner Locke?
Ask a real quick question. If we happen to get through these items faster, can we move up another one of Marty's items?
Yeah, certainly. Yep, okay. She needs to be in the chambers by five o'clock though, so we'll see, we'll see how we do.
Let's go.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, it sounds like Mr. Chair, your commission and you are in support of this. So with your blessing, I'll move on to item number three under orders of business part one. To nominate and elect the vice chair of the planning commission.
Okay, that's.
So just briefly to explain this to those that have not gone through this before. I'm going to put up your rules of procedure and this is one quick section I'll read to you. At section B, the elections process commences with individual commissioners nominating candidates until a motion is made. Seconded and approved to close nominations. So first we nominate at the conclusion of any discussions about the nominations. Then the roll call is done alphabetically and each commissioner votes for one of the nominated candidates until one is elected by simple majority. And then the newly elected or reelected chair takes the chair seat, but we're not in person, so we don't have to worry about that. So the process is really just open it up to you, commission. It's a kind of a free for all, not total Hunger Games situation, but it is a free for all. You know, start nominating, have a discussion until someone starts making a motion. If the motion is seconded, then that closes the nomination process and we'll, we'll take it from there. If the motion and the second are not passed, then we would reopen the conversation for more nominations. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'll turn it over to you to, to run your commission to nominate a vice chair.
Okay, I'm going to pull each commissioner for their nomination and then we will move on to discussion. I see Commissioner Bolton has his hand up, so you're first, Commissioner Bolton.
Yeah, I just want to nominate Stephanie. Not only is she one of the longest standing commissioners, but she's exceptionally good at her job.
Okay, I agree. Okay. Commissioner Allen, would you like to make a nomination?
I will agree. I'll nominate Commissioner Locke.
Okay, Commissioner Dells, do you have a nomination?
I would, if that was a motion, I'll second it.
I'll make that a motion. I motion that I move that we nominate or that Commissioner Locke become the vice chair.
Stephanie, are you willing to do this?
Thank you. Yes, I am, absolutely.
We don't have to ask her, do we?
Thank you. She actually doesn't get to choose.
No. Okay, so we have a motion made in the second to nominate Commissioner Stephanie Locke as the vice chair of the planning commission. Is there any more discussion on this? Okay, hearing none, seeing none, I will call for roll call for the motion.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolton?
Absolutely.
Commissioner Dells?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke? Chair LaPage?
Wholeheartedly, yes. Okay, Commissioner Locke is elected to be the vice chair for its period of one year, right? Now, correct?
It runs December to December or until reasonably practical, because we had Commissioner Lehman leave during the term. That's why it's now.
So she's gonna, she will be, the position will be up again for nomination in December.
December. Oh, so this is only until the, to this coming December, that's all it is?
That's correct. We'll do the chair and the vice chair in December.
We do it annually.
I understand. Okay, cool.
Okay, so if I understand our agenda now, so we're going to go to the public hearings now.
Correct, Mr. Chair. We're going to go to item number six.
Item number six, yeah, DS two one two two four. Okay, before we start the public hearings, I'm just going to kind of go over the ground rules. Well, the staff will give their report after the staff has given their report and the commissioners asking questions. The applicant will have five minutes to make their presentation to the planning commission. Members of the public will have three minutes to make their presentation or make, ask their questions or make their comments. And then usually I allow three minutes to the applicant to wrap up their presentation and answer any questions from the public. My intent is always to make sure that everybody has their opportunity to make their comments and to ask their questions and to have those questions answered. Okay, so having said that, the first item on our amended. Public hearing agenda tonight is item number six. This is a design study two one dash two two four and a variance. Variance two one dash two two five. This is the White Cox project. It's a consideration of final design study. And various application and associated coastal development permit for additions totaling two hundred forty seven square foot with a front yard setback exception. A two hundred sixty seven square foot accessory dwelling unit with the front yard set, setback exception. And a parking exception located on the northwest corner of Santa Fe and Sixth Avenue in the R one district. Can I have staff report, please?
Well, thank you, Chair LaPage. Can I just get confirmation that everyone can see the PowerPoint?
Good, Marty.
Looks good.
So before the planning commission this afternoon is a final design study as well as a request for a variance for the White Cox project. So this project involves the historic Comstock Studio. It is located at the northwest corner of Santa Fe and Sixth Avenue. The existing residence is one thousand six hundred and seventy eight square feet. It's a one story and has an attached garage. The applicant is proposing additions that total two hundred and forty seven square feet. Which includes converting the garage to living space and constructing a detached accessory dwelling unit. That would be two hundred and sixty seven square feet in size. So because this is a historic resource, the project is required to be reviewed by the Historic Resources Board. That was accomplished on November fifteenth, twenty twenty one, and the board did adopt a determination of consistency. Basically saying that the project is consistent with historic preservation principles. Following in January of twenty twenty two, the planning commission was presented with the concept design study. That concept design was accepted with some conditions. And here we are this evening with the final design study as well as the variance. The variance includes two front yard setback exceptions as well as a parking exception. So because this is final details, I'm going to talk a little bit about the specifics of colors, materials, fencing and the like. So starting with exterior lighting, the applicant has proposed both wall mounted and landscape lighting. All fixtures are shielded and direct light downwards, and so they comply with our residential design guidelines. Standard condition number eleven states that the. Level of illumination for the wall mounted light cannot exceed three hundred and seventy five lumens. And the lights cannot be mounted more than ten feet above the ground. For landscape lighting, the maximum level of illumination is two hundred and twenty five lumens. Landscape lighting must be spaced at least ten feet apart and can be no more than eighteen inches above the ground. So these standards have been included. In the conditions of approval and will be reviewed again prior to issuance of building permit. With regards to the colors and materials, you can see those here at the bottom of the slide. As well as the actual paint samples that were presented during the tour of inspection. The color palette is muted earth tones and is consistent with the residential design guidelines. With respect to fencing, staff has prepared special condition number thirty five. That the applicant provide details for all proposed fencing prior to issuance of building permits. At this stage, the applicant has provided a detail for a metal lattice screen. That would surround the parking pad along Sixth Avenue. The screen is proposed to be six feet tall and just under fifty feet long. The Carmel Municipal Code does limit the height of fences within the street side yard to four feet. Similarly, garden walls and retaining walls are limited to three feet. And this is due in part to allow sort of filtered views of a front garden. Those heights cannot be altered through design review by the planning commission. And the residential design guidelines actually encourage that landscaping be used before consideration of fencing. So the proposal is a combination of a metal lattice screen along with a hedge. Staff does have some concerns that the proposal is not consistent with the guidelines. Due to the height of the metal lattice screen as well as the formality and density of the proposed hedge. So staff is recommended special condition thirty six, that the metal lattice be eliminated. That the vegetation be lowered, be less formal and allow for filtered views through the property. We do understand the need for privacy as well as the need to address some issues with trespassing. And we'd like to balance those with still allowing some views of this very notable historic resource. and we'd like to balance those with still allowing some views of this very notable historic resource. With regards to site coverage, this is an eight thousand square foot lot, so nine hundred and seventy one square feet is allowed if half of that is either permeable or semi-permeable. The project currently proposes over fourteen hundred square feet of site coverage. So staff has included special condition thirty two, that this be brought into compliance prior to issuance of a building permit. The applicant did submit a landscape plan as part of the final details review. The landscape plan was reviewed by the city forester, and she had a number of comments on the plant palette. Those comments have been included as conditions of approval in special condition number twenty six, and those will be reviewed again prior to issuance of building permit. The project is also required to provide five upper canopy trees. The city forester has indicated that this requirement can also be met through payment of in lieu fees or a combination thereof. So with respect to the variance, the applicant is requesting three variances, a front yard setback variance for the master suite bathroom, which is off of the garage that's being converted. Another front yard setback variance for the accessory dwelling unit, which is located at the corner of Santa Fe and Sixth. And then a parking variance for the parking pad in the street side yard setback along Sixth Avenue. So in considering a variance, the planning commission must make all six findings in the affirmative. Those six findings are summarized here quite briefly. The staff report does include a more detailed discussion of the project's consistency with these findings. In summary, staff finds that because of the historical nature of the property, there are limitations that are unique and that the proposed project with the granting of the variance will ensure that the historical aspects are preserved while still allow for, still allowing for the property to be used for modern living purposes. So staff does not find that there's any granting of special privilege. We note that even with the granting of the variances, the property is still well under the allowed floor area that is enjoyed by surrounding properties. We do not find that any of the setback variances will become a public safety issue or be detrimental to adjacent properties. And we do support the commission's approval of the three variance requests. So with that, staff's recommendation is that the commission adopt a resolution approving the project with special conditions, which are summarized there on the right-hand side of the screen. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there questions for staff? From the commissioners? Marnie had one quick question. Regarding site coverage, is it still a case that if the site, if a site is over the site coverage, lots over the site coverage, that typically they require, if there's an addition, they require twice the square footage of the addition to be removed, or is it, I noticed you're requiring it to be brought into conformance with the required amount.
Yeah, so the minimum reduction of site coverage is going to be two times the amount of floor area added. We also do enforce that when excess site coverage is removed, it cannot be placed, you know, replaced. So what we're finding on some of these projects is that the sites are being completely scraped. I don't anticipate that here because of the historic nature of the property, but any excess site coverage that is removed, we will not allow that to be put back. So we'll balance kind of both of those standards and look to see that they're met before we issue a building permit.
Okay, I just like to keep a current understanding of the policy and how it's being applied. Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, any other questions for Marnie? So I guess you gotta get out of here, Marnie, huh? Okay.
Oh, I have, I have a question.
Sir, sir, it's not, we're not opening up to the public yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Wait, wait till the public comments, then you'll have your opportunity to make your, your comment. Okay, at this time, the applicant can come forward and make their presentation. I think it's Thomas Wood is the architect. You gonna make that presentation, Thomas?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for everybody to come out on an absolutely gorgeous day to look at one of the most unique homes in Carmel. This has been a very exciting process, beginning about a year and a half ago when we took our initial concept to Marnie, and she's been very helpful to guide us through the process. We were very pleased at the last public hearing on this, that we received conceptual approval for, for the variances being discussed today. Just, I just want to offer just a couple of clarifications. With respect to the, the understanding of a wire fence on Sixth Street, Stephen Sussman, the landscape architect, will actually clarify what that design actually is. The fence that's currently there now would only be moved four feet forward, and as I see is one of the conditions of approval and condition two. Marnie is asking us for it to comply with the nine hundred and seventy one square feet of maximum site coverage, where just a hair over fourteen hundred. We'll go through and check all the existing site coverages to make sure math is correct, but a considerable portion of the existing site coverage includes improvements and terraces that date back seventy to a hundred years. And we will kindly come back and say, here's the best we can do to reduce site coverage. But my, my gut is until I see the numbers, it will be extremely difficult for us to cut out five hundred square feet of site coverage, but we'll make every effort to comply with the semi-permeable and impervious services and provide a detailed site plan with all the numbers to Marnie for consideration. Other than that, one thing I will say about the parking on Sixth Street, it's an existing condition. The fence that is on the site now is, is not historic. It, the parking was put in, I believe, in the last six years. It's not part of the period of significance. We think it's reasonable that Stephen Sussman, the landscape architect, presented a design that actually has a straight line fence and landscape against, and Sixth Street. We have a picturesque cottage in a gridded pattern in the street all over Carmel. We think a straight line fence still allows for a very naturalistic garden on the inside of the property, but that a straight line doesn't necessarily obviate the presence of more naturalistic elements with, with other fences and other trees. So we feel that that solution is really serves the owner's best interest in a really desperate need for some additional privacy, not only looking over the fence all times day and night, but also just, you know, people accessing the property using the furniture. The last thing I'll just say is, with respect to the guideline, the guideline about four-foot-high landscaping, the landscaping is proposed would be approximately fifteen feet from the street property line. Given that and the windows that are proposed, as Stephen will describe in this, we feel that's a reasonable balance of meeting the intent of the designer and for landscaping. That's all the comments I've got, and I look forward to your feedback. You're muted. There you go.
Just a minute, sir, sir, just a minute, just a minute. Not time to speak yet. Thomas had a question for you about what your comments about the site coverage is. I understand that this is, this is the final design study, so these issues need to be resolved at this meeting. And if I'm correct.
This was, with this staff report, this was our first knowledge of a requirement to reduce site coverage at this time. We can respond quickly, but I can't offer a immediate response as to how much site coverage we could reduce. We are, we're attempting to reduce site coverage, but almost all of the site coverage we have, it's all already all existing. And that's why I'm questioning in a historic context for a historic property, the, the intention of trying to reduce the site coverage to nine hundred and seventy one. We're not adding any site coverage with this project. We're actually, we're maintaining the status quo. There's, there's, we're having trouble. Is that?
Well, I, I, I just wanted to see your position. Like I said, this is final, right now, there is a condition in the resolution to bring it into conformance with the standard. So the planning commissioners will discuss this when, when we have our discussion. So is there any, are there any other questions for the architect? Mr. Hood? From the commissioners? Mr. Commissioner Delphs?
Yeah, this is kind of for Thomas and kind of for Brandon, and it's on the same topic of site coverage. I also see in, you know, condition thirty-three on the foundation system for the ADU that it is, sort of as I understand it, somewhat of a floating foundation that minimizes the disruption to, to minimize excavation. And I wonder is, you know, the question is, when that type of foundation is used, can that be considered permeable?
So I can, I can speak to that. I think that's, that's more of a question for us. So I, I think the short answer is no, it cannot. You know, I, I think to Chair LaPage's question, if I could, just for a second, I think, I think he's correct. You know, this is the final details, and this is, this is, this is a code requirement. Unfortunately, site coverage isn't one of the handful of things that the planning commission or the city has the ability to grant a variance for right now in the code. And I do wanna, I do want to apologize to Thomas if, if it seemed like this was coming last minute. I, I believe, Marnie, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I think this was actually on the preliminary details as a, as a draft condition as well. So I don't think it was just for this one, but I may be wrong. And probably there's a lot of other stuff going on there, so I'm sure, I'm sure Thomas didn't see it, but I don't, I, I don't think that this has just been put on here, but Marnie, can you confirm that for me?
Yeah, if my memory is correct, we did include it as a draft condition at the concept design. And then I'll, maybe if I could just also offer up under the code provision, which it's not a policy, it's actually a provision of the code that says that if you're over on site coverage and you're doing an addition, you have to reduce site coverage by two times the addition at the bare minimum, that would be four hundred and ninety-four square feet. Staff also included special condition number thirty-seven, which is recommending that the parking pad be reduced to the minimum required, which is ten feet by twenty. That will also minimize any additional site coverage. We certainly do not want to suggest that any of the historic stone patios be removed, but we do see what appears to be some new site coverage elements, and we just want to, to get the property into compliance.
Mr. Chair, I am so sorry. I have to correct myself. I have, you know, a crack team over here. It's like I have a, you know, a little monitor in my ear to help me out when I say something stupid. So apparently I was wrong about the variance for the site coverage. So site coverage is actually something the planning commission can grant a variance for. So you could, as part of your final details, if we can make the same findings, which I, I think we probably could make, given the historical significance, if we can say that the, the coverage is, is part of the significance of the historical structure, that might be an avenue for you, but we, you know, we always do seek to reduce site coverage because it's better for the overall health of the forest. So just something for you to consider.
Okay, I just, I just always want to make sure that the planning commissioner has a complete understanding, the commission has a complete understanding of what their authority is and how we should apply that or use that in particular applications. I had one other quick question, so that, this is from Marnie. Marnie, that square footage you just quoted, is that including the ADU?
I did not include the ADU.
Okay, we cannot include ADUs to.
Normally, we would, yeah, normally we would not. The only reason why we're discussing it is because of the variance. So I did not include it in that calculation.
I just, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other commission, questions from the commissioners regarding this or any other matter have to do with this application for staff or the applicants?
Mr. Chairman, could I, can I be allowed a response back if we have a little time? We're gonna do some.
Yes, yes. Let's, let's have the public comments, and I'll allow you three minutes, and if you need some more time, we can discuss that.
We're gonna try and do some quick math for you on site coverage.
Okay, great, great.
Thank you.
Okay, now, Mr. Sussman, at this time.
Thank you, thank you so much. Sorry if I interrupted.
Not a problem.
I just wanted to clarify the hedge lattice screen situation. Though the lattice screen consists of, it does not run the full length of, of that, of that hedge. There are three small panels, and the reason why we had that was to include an area where we can, where people can actually look in and see the property without disturbing the owners. The privacy issue is particularly acute here because people have been wandering into the property, moving furniture around, moving pots around, and generally peering over the property at all times. The hedge is not going to be a formal hedge, and the, the reason for the lattice panels, which were perhaps two by, two by two or three by two, was just to add a whimsical touch and create windows in the hedge so that people could look in. It's, 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 it's not a complete lattice screen. I just wanted to make that clear, and the, the, the existing screening is already sort of fairly linear. And the hedge wouldn't be clipped to an inch of its life. It would be a semi-formal hedge of one particular kind like any normal hedge. I just wanted to make that very clear. And I did note the comments of, on the of individual plants, and we can easily find substitutes for those plants. I could talk directly to the, to the, to the correct official about individual plant selections. Another issue that we've done is we've reduced the water, the lawn by about forty percent, which, which reduces watering needs very considerably. And I wondered whether the commission had any, any further comments about the landscaping.
Okay, we will. Do the commissioners have any questions for Mr. Sussman? Okay. All right, Willis, you want to hold your comment, and we'll, we get to that. Okay. I apologize, Ms. Sussman. I didn't realize you were the landscape architect. That was, that was my misunderstanding. But, okay, so just something I opened up to the public for their comments. Are there any members of the public who would like to make some comments regarding this application? I don't see any hands going up. So I'm gonna assume there are no members of the public that want to make any comments. Okay. Thomas, are you ready to, with your calculations yet, to bring that back to the commission?
Thomas, you're muted. We can't hear you.
Yeah, Thomas, you need to unmute there, down the bottom left of your screen there. There you go.
Sorry about that. If I could be afforded a few more minutes, I'm calculating how much we can easily take out before we have to start taking up historic terraces.
Okay, well, we can, we can start the discussion with the commissioners, and you can come back in. Just, just raise your hand when you're, when you're ready.
I'll do. Thank you.
Did Steve White have a comment? I saw your hand kind of go up there real quick. Steve, did you have a comment you wanted to make?
I was just signaling to Thomas that we couldn't hear him.
Okay.
I'll just provide, just in, in thirty seconds or less, some of the, the background behind the goal of creating a little bit of screen. Our, the patio, the, the historic patio in front of the cottage is only about twenty feet from the, the entrance to the yard. We frequently get people who come right up to the entrance. In fact, two days ago, we had somebody who opened the gate and let the dogs out by accident. We get people who come in and move furniture around, like I, like I mentioned, leave trash in the front yard. And when people are at the front gate, they've got almost a direct shot to where I'm sitting now in our, in our dining room, and so we didn't want to screen that, that, that leaded historic window. And so the, certainly, my wife and I embrace, you know, this, this structure, this historic structure as a, as a public asset and to be viewed by the public. We simply wanted to make it in a way that's a little bit less invasive for us, still preserving The ability of the public to come and, and, and view it and take down the lattice that's in front or the trellis in front of the, uh, the historic cottage for that purpose. So just wanted to, to share some of the, kind of background.
Okay, thank you, Mister White. All right, I'm gonna open this up to the, uh, close the public comments, open it up to the Commissioners for their comments on it. Um. Commissioner Locke, I think you had a comment you wanted to make. Why don't you start off?
Sure, um, well, to begin with, I just wanna say I really think this is a thoughtful project. Um, and appreciate the effort that's gone into preserving this historic resource. Uh, my comment kinda had to do with the hedge and, um, and, and I think that. It was sort of discussed as far as the panels being there to look in and see the cottage area or to see the, the studio area. And I'm wondering if rather than using the, um, panels. Is there a way to perhaps create a window into the hedge? That would provide kind of a direct access to looking at, um, the studio area versus looking at your house. Um, so that somebody who's walking along the street does see this, this hedge area that's your privacy hedge. But then you have this window that you can stop and peek in and it focuses just in on. Um, what you want them to see and not wait, the, what else is going on. Um, and so I, I'm just hoping there might be a way to do that. Rather than, than actually putting a physical barrier that's, that's a non-natural barrier. Um, but that's, that's my main. Thing was that the metal lattice just is a little, to me, there's gotta be another way that you could focus people. Um, I am sorry that you've had people coming in and moving furniture and on the patio and stuff. It's an absolutely gorgeous little place. And that's, that's gotta be, uh, disturbing. Um, and I think that the ADU, um, having moved it forward a little bit. Um, is a great, uh, improvement and I'm very supportive of the color palette that was chosen. And, um, just think this is a really cute project.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Locke. Uh, Commissioner Dells, your, your comments, please?
Um, yeah, so, um, I wanna get to yes on all aspects of this project because it's, it's really perfect in so many ways. To have this historic resource preserved so well and, uh, to make it livable so that. Because when people live in these places, they take care of them and they, they, they last, you know, for a longer time. So. Um, really kudos to the owners for taking this on as a, you know, as a, as a special project and for understanding this. You know, the significance of the responsibility they have, um, and wanting to do this, I think, just right in so many ways. The, uh, I know we have to make findings on, uh, the variants. I know there's three variances and we have to find. Um, in, in, in the affirmative on six, on the six different conditions. Um, I'm supportive of what staff has done there. Um, and I'm supportive, um, of, of the variants. Um, on the landscape screen wall. Um, I'm just looking at the condition, uh, that's been written and, um, I. It, it does suggest eliminating the metal lattice, lattice and proposing alternative landscape design for the hedge, uh, that is. Shorter, less formal and allows filtered views of the front garden and historic studio. I'm content to allow that condition to stand as is, um, and leave it to staff and the applicant to figure out. How, how best to do that. I think Commissioner Locke's idea is a very good one. Protect the house, focus on, um, on the cottage. Um, aspect of this thing. Um, and then as soon as, uh, Mister Hood has a number. Um, I'm prepared, if necessary, to agree to a variance on site coverage, um, that would. Do as much as, as possible while preserving the historic hardscape, because I just think that's what we're supposed to do here. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dells. Uh, Commissioner Bolton, would you like to make your comments?
Yeah, sure. Um, first of all, thank you for your, you know, contribution to the City of Carmel by preserving this exceptional historic resource. And I think it's, it's been very well preserved here. Um, I agree with my, uh, fellow Commissioners and I agree with the staff report. But I'm afraid at this point, I would be moving for a continuum project because not only do I wanna know the numbers, but I wanna see a plan. For the revised site plan and revised landscaping. So I don't think it's sufficient to simply have, uh, a raw number and then maybe a description of where this is. I'd like to see it actually on paper. And so I'm apologizing for this because I, I know it's extra time for you, but I don't really see a great way around it, at least from my perspective. But I, uh, do not support the, uh, metal screening either. I basically agree with my fellow Commissioners. I think we can find a landscaping. Resolution and I think the landscape design in general is lovely. That's basically it, unless we can have more discussion about this segment.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Well, I think we're gonna have some more discussion about that and then you can, you know, you can join back in on that as we all can. You know, uh, Mister Hood is coming up with something, so, um, yeah, I don't, oh, excuse me, Commissioner Allen, would you like to go ahead with your comments?
Uh, sure. So I love the word that Commissioner Locke chose, which is thoughtful. And I really appreciate the fact that they're doing, um, everything possible to, um, make sure that. We have this wonderful and, and valuable asset maintained. And so I am good with the staff recommendations.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Allen. Yeah, I don't, I'm pretty much, I'm in agreement with the, uh, staff recommendations. Uh, I think the only outstanding issue is the site coverage. I'm actually good with all the conditions. I see Thomas has his hand up. Why don't you go ahead? We can hear what you have to say, Thomas, unmute there.
This is a casual procedure today. Thank you for allowing me to come back. Uh, all right, I've crunched some fast numbers. I appreciate, uh, Michael Bolton's. Concern about seeing a revised drawing. I've stripped out everything, uh, that is, uh, outside of the, I wanna call it historic impervious surfaces. And without compromising the design, uh, I come up with a thousand and thirty-five square feet of site coverage. Uh, Marnie is looking for nine seventy-one, is that correct?
I think that was the number.
Okay, if, if with, uh, Stephen Sussman, the landscape architect, if we can find about sixty square feet. Uh, in the entry path, right now it's decomposed granite, uh, we could, we could meet that. The best I can do right now is a thousand and thirty-five square feet. I'm within sixty feet of full compliance. Anymore, I've gotta, I've gotta look at eliminating a walkway to the house, which I don't wanna do. Uh, I've taken out the parking area. I've taken out paved areas behind the building. That were done for access. I don't need those anymore. Uh, I took out areas, uh. Uh, a little bit of paved area where the parking was on Santa Fe. So we were able to cut out four hundred square feet of paving without compromising the design.
Okay, uh, having said that, uh, Commissioner Bolton, why don't you jump in and make some comments?
Yeah, that's great. I mean, that, that's about as good as you could possibly, I could possibly hope for in a meeting like this wherein essentially you preserve all of the, uh, historic aspects. And remove the new things that bring you out of compliance. Is there any way to make the paths potentially permeable? Or any of the paths permeable, which might help you out? Or is that pretty much a non-starter? I just, just a question for you.
That's, that's a good question for, uh, Stephen Sussman. Stephen, are you there?
Muted, sir.
Mister, Mister Suesman, you're, uh, muted.
Yes, we can certainly make, sorry, can I proceed?
Yes, go ahead, go ahead.
Certainly make the paths more permeable, uh, by removing decomposed granite and putting stepping stones. With little growing plants around them. And, uh, so I, I can see a way of, of increasing permeability in a number of areas. That shouldn't be a, a problem. Um, I'd like to respond to, uh, the, uh. The person who was suggesting windows, um, and removing those tiny little la- lattice panels. I mean, if we can just keep, oh, the whole point was to keep windows in the hedge. At eye level height so that you could see through, uh, you know, you could go right up to the hedge. And see selected views by having the, these openings in the hedge. And I just thought it would be a charming, uh, whimsy to match the, 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 uh. Uh, the diamond panes of some of the windows to have a little bit of very light, uh, sort of lattice work. That, that, that was the only reason for the lattice. We could certainly have windows in the heads. That's not a problem.
Okay, thank you, Mister Suesman. All right, it sounds like some additional square footage is gonna be removed with the stepping stones too. Thomas, did you, you had a comment regarding that?
Yeah, this is, this is fun back and forth super quick here. Uh, if, if we took Stephen's suggestion. We could reduce site coverage by another hundred and fifty square feet.
That brings you into compliance, right?
That brings us into compliance, as, as far as.
Well done.
That says, yeah.
Okay, all right, so that's, that's, that's becoming an issue.
Excellent, thank you. That was, I withdraw my form, former objection and statement that I would wanna plan because you found the only way possible to avoid that. Good job.
Thank you for the time.
That's called on the fly.
So Mister Chair, we would just leave then, we would suggest to staff. So Marty, just so you know, Marty has now transitioned to the city council meeting. So I'll finish this item out. We would just, we would suggest then our recommendation would be to leave that condition as written. It sounds like we can get there and we'll work with Thomas, uh, and his team to just revise the plans accordingly, um, on our side.
Okay, that's, that's my understanding too. All right, uh, are there any other comments from the Commissioners regarding this? Otherwise, I think we oughta take a look. Get the, uh.
Just have one quick thing. I really like the lattice. I think it's very charming. I think it'd be very attractive, but it violates our rules and I just can't support it. I like the whole idea. Um, I've seen this done other places effectively. I know it's a great technique, but I just think we could do it without the structure and so I appreciate the efforts to do so.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Bolton. Okay, so we have a resolution from staff with, uh, I'll just go over the special conditions quickly. Make sure we wanna include all those, uh, special condition number thirty-one is a pre-construction meeting. Thirty-two is the, uh, site reduction, which we just had a pretty complete discussion about. And as per recommendation of staff, we'll just leave that since the applicant can meet that, uh, requirement. Uh, special edition number thirty-three is the ADU foundation system. Thirty-four is, uh, right away encroachments, removing those. And thirty-five is the fencing, uh, prior issuance, applicant shall submit a review, approval of community planning. An elevation drawing rendering the, uh, representative, representative photo or specification cut sheet of all existing proposed fence walls, gates. Showing height, location, proposed material of each. Should be clearly, uh, uh, identified on the plan. Number thirty-six is the landscapes, uh, landscape screen wall. So prior issued of building permit, the application applicant shall submit a review and approval for, uh, of a revised landscape design. Along Sixth Avenue hedge, eliminate the metal lattice and propose an alternative landscape design for the hedge that is shorter, less formal. And allows filtered views, uh, through the front ground, garden to the historic studio. I think what I understand from the applicant's. Landscape architect that they can do that. And then item thirty-seven. Is the Sixth Avenue parking, which, uh. A revise the onsite parking pads, no longer, no larger than ten by twenty, B. Uh, provide product information, paving materials, C. Uh, detail demonstrating the paving is sand sets and impermeable. D, uh, note removal of all speech, excess asphalt from the right away and restore it to natural condition. So that is the, the resolution. Resolution contains the variants too, so contains the, uh, variants. And the six standards that each variance must meet. So I don't see any changes to that unless any other of the Commissioners. Feel anything needs to be changed. So do we have a motion with, for, to support this resolution?
I'll move, um, I made approval of DS twenty-one dash two-two-four and variance twenty-one. Dash two-two-five for White Cox. Um, this is, um, adopting the resolution, approving the final design study variance. And associated coastal development permit, um, for additions at the northwest corner of Santa Fe and sixth. And, and adoption of the resolution, I already said that, so.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second down.
Okay, the motion has been made in a second to adopt the resolution. As per staff with no changes to the special conditions. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none, can we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolton?
Yes.
Commissioner Dells?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Chair LaPage?
Yes, uh, the motion to support the resolution is passed. Thank you. Okay, the next item in the public hearings tonight is. Another design study. This is DS two-one-three-two-six. This is California Coast LLC. And this is consideration of the final design study associated coastal development for the demolition of existing one thousand three hundred and fifteen. Square foot, one-story residence with an attached garage and construction of a new two-story eighteen-hundred square foot. Family, single-family residence inclusive of a detached garage located in the front yard setback located on San Carlos Street. To southwest of First Avenue in the Arwin District. Can we have staff report, please?
Thank you, Chair. Everything showing okay?
Yes, we can see it. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me, uh, turn on my camera as well. Okay, so just as a reminder, the, uh, the applicant is proposing to demolish all improvements on the site. And construct a new one thousand five hundred sixty-five square foot residence with a two hundred thirty-five square foot detached garage. A seven hundred forty-five square foot attached ADU is also proposed for the site. Um, at the previous hearing, um, a number of draft conditions were, uh, required of the applicant. First one being the successful passing of a volume study. Uh, the volume study was successfully completed and passed. Twenty-one thousand six hundred square feet of cubic volume are allowed and eighteen thousand four hundred seventy-two, uh, cubic feet are proposed. Uh, another draft condition was the applicant shall provide the manufacturer specifications for the proposed charcoal metal roof prior to final details review. The applicant did provide the spec sheet for the metal roof. Um, it is manufactured by metal tailor in the premier lock series. Uh, the roof is a charcoal finish, uh, and is consistent with, uh, the finish of other metal roofs that have been approved by the commission. Um, in respect to the building color, uh, the applicant also needed to clarify the color of the exterior materials. Um, which the applicant has done successfully. Um, the exterior wall cladding is a, a do- adobo Vulcan cladding, um, which is a thermally rep-modified rad of pine. Uh, so it is a wood finish, um, by Reson Timber Company. That's the manufacturer with a, uh. The, uh, the finish is a war- warbler finish, which is, uh, as you can see, a brown finish. Uh, and then lastly, the applicant also needed to identify the proposed exterior lighting, which they have done. Um, however, a discussion on the lighting will follow later in the presentation. Uh, the applicant has also proposed some changes from the plans that were accepted at the concept hearing. So the first change is an increase. Uh, the front door and entry portal height by one foot to match the eight-foot window, uh, walls throughout. Uh, so the figure on the left, you can see here, um, the door matched the bay window height. And then the revised proposal, the door now is a little bit above that bay window. Um, you might remember from the previous concept hearing, there was some discussion regarding the initial proposal. So this was the, and, uh, very initial proposal, which was not accepted by the commission. Uh, and this is the revised proposal, which was accepted. Um, and there was an initial reduction. In the door height as well as the bay window height. Um, again, you can see the initial proposal, the accepted concepts of the, both the bay window and the door got a little bit shorter. And then in this revised proposal, the door is getting a little bit taller. Over the bay windows stay in the same size. Uh, so staff is asking the, the commission to consider if the increase in height, uh, by one foot for the door is appropriate. As the resolution is drafted, uh, staff is supportive of this, uh, small increase in height. Um, however, if the commission is not supportive, you can always include an additional, uh, condition in the resolution to revise the plans. condition in the resolution to revise the plans consistent with the concept drawings, which would be this middle figure here. And then the second change was a reduction in the windows on the rear elevation. So that's these windows down on the back. These windows are actually decreasing in height by about six inches, and staff is supportive of this change. There's, there's no impact or visual change to, to any neighbor or from the street. So in respect to the finished materials for the site, again, the wall cladding is the adobo, adobo Vulcan and the warbler finish. Aluminum clad windows are proposed throughout, manufactured by Sierra Pacific in a battleship gray color. For the pitched roofs, the applicants proposing use the standing sea metal roof in a charcoal gray finish with the, the bay window feature as well as the entry feature. Those will also be finished in metal, but the same material as the metal roof. And then the flat roof portions of the building will be finished with the membrane with an aggregate covering that mem, the membrane roof. So it'll have the appearance of a tar and gravel roof. Though a, a separate assembly. So again, it's a, a plastic layer with a stone covering on top resembling a tar and gravel roof. And then the roof over the ADU will be a Japanese rock garden, excuse me. However, there wasn't much detail provided in the plans regarding the, the layout of this garden. So condition of approval number forty requires that, that specifics be provided on the landscape or roof plan regarding the size and design of this for review by the appropriate city departments. And then the flat roofs are also proposed to have, the flat roof of the main residence is also proposed to have skylights. These skylights will not be seen from the right away or adjacent properties, but we have included condition of approval number twelve requiring that they be flat, have matching flashing and the automatic skylight shades as is normal with all skylights. So for exterior lighting, you can read standard condition of approval number eleven, which is included for, for all projects. There are three types of light fixtures proposed, the first being a linear LED light. So this is a flexible light strip. It's proposed to be two hundred fifteen lumens and placed under the steps to eliminate the stairs. Staff is supportive of this application of the light. However, the lights also proposed to be placed within the recess of the building entry right in the corner and will be placed vertically. So if I go back a few slides, the light would be vertically placed in this corner right here. However, that conflicts with the design guidelines that the lighting be shielded and downlit, because if it were vertically placed, it would shine outward. So condition of approval number thirty has been included that that light be removed and an alternative light be selected for the, the landing area, which lights are required by building code for, for building entries. For the landscape light, this light fixtures shines light up to three hundred sixty-five lumens where two hundred twenty-five lumens is the maximum for landscape lighting. Landscape lighting is also required to be no more than eighteen inches above the ground. Space no closer than ten feet apart and shall not be used for tree, wall fence, or accent lighting of any type. So staff is not supportive of this light fixture as it exceeds the allowable lumens can be pointed up on the, the lighting plan. There's space closer than ten feet apart. So condition of approval number thirty-one states that an alternative light fixture be selected and that the lighting plan be revised to comply with condition of approval number eleven. Lastly, the, the proposed wall sconce exceeds the allowable lumens by quite a bit. The maximum allowable is three hundred seventy-five lumens. Additionally, this light fixture is not shielded and downlit as the light is projected backwards onto the building, which would then throw the light up onto the building wall. So again, creating a wall washing effect towards the, the light really should be coming out downward. So condition of approval number thirty-two has been included stating that again, a revised light fixture that complies with condition of approval number eleven be selected. So all those light fixtures would be included in the building permit plans and staff would work on with the applicant on selecting an appropriate light fixture. In respect to site coverage and landscaping, the applicant has provided a preliminary landscape plan, though the forester has not been able to provide a comprehensive review at this point. Though condition of approval number twenty requires forester review and approval of the landscape plan prior to building permit issuance. The applicant is proposing to remove all site coverage improvements across the entire site, except for a small portion of the driveway, which will be reused. And condition of approval number thirty-three has been included that states that if the driveway is to be replaced or needs to be replaced as a result of the construction, that a new permeable driveway be installed. So right now, the, the existing driveway is impermeable. So as a result of construction, if it gets torn up, destroyed, or repairs need to happen, the new driveway would need to be permeable. And then the applicant is also proposing wood steps throughout. So these wood steps as well as wood steps and landings back here. It's the same manufactured wood as the exterior wall cladding, just in a, a different finish. The finish being a straw, so it's a lighter stain. And then also a new six foot tall and four foot tall wood fence throughout the perimeter of the, the site. So staff recommends the planning commission adopt a resolution approving a final design study and associated coastal development permit as described on the screen, and that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there questions for Evan from the commissioners? Any questions? Okay, I don't see any. Thank you, Evan. Okay, Mr. Goodwin, would you like to make your presentation at this time to the commission?
Yes, thank you, Chair LaPage. And commissioners, it's nice to see you again. Just a few comments, just briefly, because Evan does such a, a good job. I don't need to follow up too much. We accept the comments and the conditions that are being placed on there and we will work to make things right in terms of the lighting and some of the other things that were pointed out by Evan just previously. The client again is really looking to make this house subservient on the site and blend into the forest. And so we thank you guys for all reviewing the materials. This has been a, a very, very thorough process and I appreciate it. But thank you again for the time and the consideration on this project. My clients and myself and our team really appreciate it, and I'm open for any questions or comments.
Are there any questions for Mr. Goodwin, this time from the commissioners? I don't see any. Okay, thank you. This time we're open it to the public for comments. Would any members of the public like to address the planning commission regarding this application? Carol Hall, you have your hand up? Go ahead. Need to unmute there, Carol.
I swore I'd never do that again. I live very close to this house, and so I see it daily. Here's an example, unfortunately, of a cottage, wasn't a wonderful cottage, but it was a Carmel cottage that's going to be replaced with a modern house that is quite large when you consider the ADU as well. And that makes me very sad. It makes a lot of our residents, the majority of our residents, very sad. One thing I thought of that I mentioned last time that the architect seemed to warm to was that the tar and gravel roof on the garage be replaced with a gable that matched that of the rest of the house. Given I realize behind it is a flat area, but it would not impact the neighbors view. And the modern lighting, I think at least it will hopefully kind of step back from and, and be part of the forest, I hope, but it's not something that we believe is, fits in the Carmel character. Lovely design for somewhere else, not Carmel. So, thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Is there any else in the public who'd like to address the planning commission at this time? I see a hand up. Yeah, I see a hand up there.
Well, how are you doing? Thank you. My concern on this is you know, from a practical standpoint, you've got a zero setback on the garage. That creates, and I submitted some, the letter and, and some specifications on the material, so you all should have it. There's no right of entry. So how do you maintain this siding? It's in the manufacturer's guidelines for maintenance, which I attached to all your packets, requires near, near yearly maintenance, easy for me to say. How are you going to do that without a right of entry on the property next door? It's, you know. So that, the idea I would think from looking at the drawings, there's enough room to move that building a foot and a half or two feet off of that property line without running into any tree problems. The front elevation shown on the, the street elevation shown on the architect's drawings shows that, and also his sheet. Well, A three point three is the street view, and then sheet A one point two also shows room to do that. And there's no reason to burden the neighbor or at least condition it that they obtain a right of entry so the building can be maintained. And if they want to get further away from the trees, you could push the building back that, the garage back that additional foot and a half and make it common wall with the main structure, which would save one foundation wall and two areas of siding. And that would make the driveway a little bit of an easier swing. But, or if you really want to go with a zero setback, which makes it very difficult because your survey better be perfect. Then go with a, a masonry material, something that doesn't need to be maintained. So that's my comments on that. I, I think that's one heck of a burden to put on an adjoining property owner. What if he doesn't let you on the property? Do you have to bring an action against him for right of access to take care of your deteriorating siding material? That doesn't make sense. Obviously, the other thing that I don't see in this application we, today, is the trash enclosure. Where is it? That's part of the, part of the deal is you have to shield your trash cans. Where is it? What does it look like? So anyway, that's, that's kind of where I am on, on that. The other interesting aside is and I am familiar with this. Once you demo that building, because the ADU is permitted, basically as you would permit a room addition, which changes your structural calculations and everything. Once you demo everything, this now all becomes new construction. You can design the whole floor plan just this way it was before, but it's all new construction. That permit's gone away. So anyway. If you have any questions, I'd be more, more than happy to answer them. Thanks. Thank you for letting me enter my comments.
Thank you, sir. Okay, are there any other members of the public that would like to speak to the planning commission regarding this application? Okay, I don't see any hands going up. All right, I'm going to close the public comments, open it up to the commissioners for their comments. Commissioner Locke, you have your hand up? You want to go ahead?
Yeah, I actually would like to hear Andrew's response to the two questions J C just had, which have to do with moving the garage slightly to the south. Access to the north side of the garage, maintenance of the material, because we all know moss grows on the north side. So, and, and also where the trash containers are.
So to address the, the comment about the property line, this is something that is allowed per code, and so we understand that there is a agreement or some kind of courtesy agreement that would have to be made for any kind of access. But as far as I'm concerned, and from what I understand, I don't believe this has been a big stopping point for other approved projects for detached buildings. Though I understand that if we were to move towards a masonry construction, most likely this commission would not approve that on the street frontage, as we, we would look at that as unless it was a stone, like a Carmel stone or some kind of stone, it would be a little too modern of a, of a building. We, you know, we can discuss with the planning department and of course in the building application, if we need to move it. I do agree with J C. If we're going to be, you know, looking to maintain and want to be a good neighbor, then we could move it to the plan south, to the south. But to attach it to the building would then violate the setback. And so this is a detached building that is allowed to be where it is based on the code. And again, it's, I guess, a, a question of precedent when it comes down to how other projects have been dealt with. The comment on the trash enclosure is something that we don't have in our plans and we, we will need to address that. So that is something that we will need to deal with. I do not have an answer for that currently, but we will look at that.
Mr. Goodwin, is that is that side of the, the garage, is that a one-hour rated siding?
The abado material and the construction of that is to be a one-hour rated. So all we'd be doing is five eighths inch drywall to create a one-hour rated wall. But this is not a building permit set to review, so I do not have those details in there.
Okay, all right, I'm just curious about that. All right. So we were, Evan, you have your hand up? You want to make a comment?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to, to clarify. There is no requirement to have a trash enclosure. The only requirement is that the trash be screened from public view. This is in title eight point sixteen one one zero requirements for single-family premises. All solid waste recycle, recyclable materials and organic material containers in the R one district shall be located in the rear or side yard setbacks. Except when there are steep slope areas and all areas shall be screened from public view.
Okay, thanks for that clarification, Evan. Okay, Commissioner Locke, did you have some more comments you wanted to?
Sure, those, those were just questions, but yeah, now that I've got gotten those answers. And first of all, I do want to say that I really, I think that the use of the sustainable and low carbon footprint adobo wedding, wood siding is good. It, it is sustainable, which is nice, and it, and it is actually kind of a pretty, pretty wood looking wood, pretty wood. And the door height, I would prefer to see the concept as it was approved at concept approval for the height. The linear LED, I think that's already been dealt with, and yeah, I definitely don't like to have too much outdoor lighting, so I think that screening all of the outdoor lighting is really important. I was curious, we did mention the gable on the garage and putting a, a different roof line on the garage, and I thought last hearing that you were going to look at doing that, and I guess I should have asked that question when I was asking questions, but it, I mean, it's, to me, it's not a deal killer, but I know it was mentioned and it probably would look nice. And but I think for the most part, if you can move the garage And but I think for the most part, if you can move the garage slightly to the south to at least give it a little bit of entry, I think there's a neighbor to the north that has not participated in these hearings. That house may be currently in some different type of ownership or whatever. And without having any kind of agreement with them, I think that's a little concerning. Those are really my my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Locke. Commissioner Bolton, would you like to make your comments?
Absolutely. So I'm generally in agreement with Commissioner Locke. I too agree that the doors should be back how we approved it. I like, I think the other design was a good compromise. Anyway, in general, I support this project. I don't have a problem with the materials or any of these issues. I think that it would be ideal, as I mentioned in the original hearing, to move the garage down south, I guess it is a little bit, if you can, for access. I was rebuffed at that former hearing, but maybe now we'll have more action on that. But I'm confident and staffed excellent job on this staff report, and I agree with it.
Thank you, Commissioner Bolton. Commissioner Delft.
Thank you. So I missed the June meeting when the concept was approved. But I was there in December, I think, or January, when we first saw this project. And to the architect Andrew, you really came back with something. You clearly listened and took on a lot of, I thought thoughtful input at the time. I think that the original concept just had so much going on. It was kind of yelling, look at me. And I don't think that's happening anymore. This, I agree with you that this design, it looks cottagey, you know, a new version of a cottage. And that it it seems quite respectful of the surrounding and particularly of the forest. So well done on that. I have nothing to add from what my other commissioner, my other colleagues have said or would agree. Moving the garage, I think that's excellent input from the public, from J C particularly, that you'll probably be glad you you preserved a little bit of space there. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Delft. Commissioner Allen?
I appreciate the comments from J C, and I would agree, I would suggest if they can move the garage to do that. But otherwise, I would go with all of the staff recommendations.
Okay, thank you for your comments, Commissioner Allen. Yeah, I don't have a whole lot to add. I just appreciate the attitude that this particular designer architect has taken the whole time. He's listened to us. He took a kind of an extreme design and came back with something which I feel like is a it is a cottage. It's got has a wood exterior now. It blends in with the site and the forest very well. And I think it represents a modern approach to a cottage, but it still fits into our village very well. So I think this is a very nice design. I I'm not quite, I wasn't quite clear what the reason was to want to raise the the elevation on the entry door. It seems like the other commissioners are fine with it the way it was before. Unless there was a compelling reason why that needed to go up. Was it was it a what did it have to do with an access issue, the height of the door, Mr. Goodwin?
It was an interior design gesture to make all the the doors throughout the house at eight foot plate height. So we basically have this eight foot header that goes around everywhere, and then it doesn't at the front door. And the window company, as we were going through the the bid with it, pointed it out. And we had reduced it, of course, to make the front facade different, reducing the apertures from the first meeting that we had. And so we were proposing, can we lift that one foot to meet the same head height within that space of all the other windows? And that was the reason why we came to for that recommendation.
Okay, thank you for that clarification on that. Okay. So those are really my comments. Why don't we take a look at this resolution we have here? I've got it right here. So we had, we have a number of special conditions. I'll just go through them briefly. The the first three, thirty, thirty one, thirty two, have to do with the bringing the the entry landscape and wall scots into performance with our lighting ordinance. Number thirty three is the if the driveway is destroyed, the existing driveway that will be replaced with permeable. Thirty four is a tree planting requirement. Thirty five is the landscaping installation or installed prior final inspection. Thirty six was elimination of the copper downspouts and gutters. Thirty seven was the all landscaping shall be installed prior to scheduling final inspection again. Thirty eight fencing, any portion of the fence located within front yard setbacks should be no taller than four feet. Thirty nine was the roof deck access. Forty was the roof deck garden. Forty one right away encroachments and forty two was conditional approval acknowledgement. So it doesn't seem like there were any comments from the commission that had any problem with those. There was comments from the commission. It seems like there was a an agreement that the detached garage should be moved to the south at least one foot. So that may be want to be included as a special condition of this motion. So having said that, do we have a motion ready to be made?
Yeah, let me get there. I move to approve the resolution that's in our packet approving design study DS two one three, six, two, and the associated coastal development permit with the addition of a condition to move the garage. I'll say a foot or more to the south. And that's it.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the resolution as per staff with all the special conditions plus the added special condition that the detached garage should be moved one foot or more to the south.
Mister Chair, can I make just a suggestion, just having having been through these before, perhaps if I could just suggest, perhaps, maybe make the condition say move the northern wall of the garage one foot, just in case, you know, that gives the architects some latitude. The way if the condition was written that way would be have to pick up the entire garage and move it one foot versus just really the wall that I think that's in question. I don't want to presume, but I think that's what the commissioner, Commissioner Delft is trying to accomplish with that.
I'll amend my motion accordingly.
Is the garage wide enough to do that?
I don't know off the top of my head. I just, you know, maybe Andrew can speak to that, but I'm just
The minimum size of the garage would be be ten by twenty. So if if it's if it's ten feet wide, I don't know what the width was. Andrew, what's the width of the garage? Can you help us out there?
Yeah, the interior measurement from finish to finish is ten feet. So I I hear I hear what Brandon's saying, like, I appreciate that. And that's a really good addition to that motion, but we would be basically picking up the building and moving it south.
Yeah, you're at the minimum size, so the whole building would have to be moved.
Exactly.
Okay, so I think Commissioner Delft. Oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say, as an alternative, you could just establish a a minimum setback from the north property line of a one one foot.
Okay, that's probably a better way to word it, I think. Are you? Are you in agreement with that, Commissioner Delft?
I am, yes.
Okay, and you're in the second stance. All right, okay. So we have a motion to accept the resolution as per staff with one added special condition that the minimum setback on the north side of the detached garage should be one foot. Is there any more discussion? Okay, hearing none, can we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolton?
Yes.
Commissioner Delft?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Chair LaPage?
Yes, the motion is carried. Thank you, everyone. Okay, so on our modified public hearings tonight, we are on item number seven. This is another final design study. This is DS two one dash four, three, five, the McDonald project. As I said, it's consideration of a final design study associated coastal development for the remodel and the addition that includes a new ADU for three hundred and nine, six ninety eight square foot nonconforming three story residence. The project is located on Castaneda Street, four southwest and fourth in the R one zoning district. The staff report, please.
Hey, Chair LaPage, I need to recuse myself.
Yes, Commissioner Delft needs to recuse himself because he's within three hundred feet of the project.
Thank you, Chair. This is the final design study for the McDonald project. A quick background on this. And it is a six thousand square foot lot with approximately twenty nine hundred square feet of existing existing house. And they're proposing two thousand four hundred and sixty square feet. And that excludes the ADU, which is about one thousand three hundred and twenty two square foot. And it is a nonconforming house. It is a three story house in an R one district that only allows two stories. But the proposed plate and ridge height does not exceed the previous nonconformity. And on the, you know, during the concept hearing, commission considered the interaccessibility of the ADU. And the applicant has closed off the accessibility right here. And they have converted the, what was the window before into a swinging door. And so the ADU now has an external front entrance to the to the downstairs ADU. And the other things that were considered during her conservating was the garage, which is all have, this has been met by the applicant, which is about ten feet, ten feet by twenty feet. Also, the third floor floor area, and it now meets the meeting because definition of a floor area measurement. And they proposed copper gutters and downspout. So now they are proposing aluminum gutters with downspouts with that has weathered copper paint. And this is an example of it, which is sort of matte finished. And regarding the some of the final details for the building and roofing, they're proposing horizontal wood siding with cream ivory color as well as the roof is going to be a gray slate shingle. And the brick veneer is going to be also cream ivory finish. The windows, they're proposing an Arcadia custom aluminum windows and going to stop opinion is the proposed window is suitable because it fits the style of the new design as well as it has divided lights, which is encouraged by residential design guideline. And all the exterior doors are going to be aluminum and glass, except for the garage door, as well as the front door. The driveway pavers are going to be permeable stone pavers, but it's going to be sand set. And they're proposing plant material in between. The landscape plan, they're proposing forty fifteen gallon Portugal Laurel around the north, west and the east. And there's three floors that doesn't require any additional trees. How she, the city for us hasn't reviewed the landscape plan yet. So condition number nine requires the process approval for landscape prior to building permit being issued. And also condition number thirty eight, special condition thirty eight specifies that any modification to the landscape landscape will require new design study. The Western neighbor has some privacy concern about the removal of the of the vegetation. And this is a view from figure one, you could see the view from the master bedroom of the Western neighbor. And this concerns that removing the these vegetation will cause privacy issue for him. So a modified condition for number forty states that applicant shall maintain the existing or similar vegetation at the western property line at an even height of fifteen feet, provide privacy screen for the adjacent neighbor in perpetuity. And regarding fences and walls, they're proposing a dark brown vertical wood fencing. And again, in the north, west and and the south elevation and also you retaining wall in the front that would have the same kind of brick veneer as the garage, which has a cream ivory finish. And also the Western neighbor would like the to keep the existing six foot six foot fence and with that to be retained. But if the fences replaced, he would want the the new fence to be eight feet tall. And, you know, this is something that the commission can add as a special condition. Regarding the lighting, they have proposed down facing and shielded lighting with architectural bronze finish. And they're proposing total of twelve fixtures around the property. And they're not proposing any landscape proposal and the luminance meets the ordinance. And well, staff recommends approval of the final design study and associated coastal development permits as well as with the the condition also recommends the amendment of condition number forty. And this concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for staff from the commissioners? I don't see any, Suray. So thank you very much, Suray, for your presentation. Okay. At this time, would the applicant like to address the planning commission regarding this application?
Yeah, good afternoon. This is Sam Pitnick. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, we can, Sam. Go ahead.
All right. Yeah, good afternoon, Commissioners, Chair LaPage. Suray, thank you for that presentation. Suray kind of, I think, highlighted a lot of the the changes that we've made since we're all at the commission last, but I kind of just want to touch upon a few of the the key items. So, yeah, since we're all here last month, like Suray said, we have removed all the proposed gas lanterns and gone to a more minimal shielded downlit light fixture as shown on the plans. Suray did pull up, I think, a nice example photo of the proposed gutters. They will not be copper anymore. They will be a painted aluminum in a matte finish to, you know, achieve the look of kind of a more weathered darker brown copper gutter, but they will again not be copper. As Suray mentioned, yeah, we we have removed the interior connection to the ADU. So now they are completely separate and independent living facilities with their own entrances. And we've also worked with staff to bring that upper floor area into compliance. This was achieved by dropping the north and south ends of that long existing gabled roof down. I think an added benefit of this change is that it further helps to reduce and break up the large mass of that existing house and that large existing gabled roof. I want to thank Mister Delft for reaching out and bringing the the hedge between the the shared properties to our attention. I know we're all out there today to take a look at it and discuss it. We don't take any exception to that condition of approval, either maintaining or similarly having a hedge at least fifteen feet high. As as far as the replacement of the fence goes, maybe this can just be worded in the condition. I think if if that existing hedge were to remain, I don't know that we would feel as inclined to replace the existing fence, but I can talk with my clients about that. And then, yes, certainly, if if the planning commission were open to approving a taller fence, I I think we would be fine with that. Otherwise, I know six feet is the height limit. So other than that, we don't take any issue with any of the other conditions for this project. And so I want to thank you and happy to answer any questions at this time.
Are there any questions for for Sam regarding the applicants application? Okay, thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
All right. Are the any members of the public that would like to speak to the planning commissioner, make comments, or have questions regarding this application? I don't see any hands going up. I don't hear anybody. So I will close the public comments, open it up to the commissioners. Commissioner Locke, would you like to make some comments?
Yeah, I don't actually have a lot of comments. I think, given the onsite inspection today, that if they retain the existing vegetation to the west side, there's coverage as far as privacy concerns. And that we not necessitate replacing the fence and just what I heard was everybody would be happy with that. So no, I don't have any problems with any of the other other parts of this.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Locke. Commissioner Bolton, do you have any comments?
Not much. Basically, thank you for, you know, incorporating the changes we asked you to make from last time. And I'm especially pleased that there is no interior access for the ADU. And I assume the wall in the living room next And I'm especially pleased that there is no interior access for the A D U and I assume the wall in the living room next to the fireplace. Won't ever be open to creating access door to get downstairs, for one thing would just ruin that space, I would recommend not doing it. In any event, I think staff did an excellent job on this project as always, and so I support the staff's recommendations and commissions approval. Thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Bolton, Commissioner Allen, do you like to make your comments?
I agree, I am, I think it looks great and I would approve based on staff's recommendations.
Okay, I don't really have anything to add other than I appreciate. The architect's ability and willingness to take the direction of the planning commission. And staff has done a good job here with this project, looking at the resolution, we have. Some special conditions. Number thirty-three is the gutter, gutter and downspout color. Thirty-four is the front door to the A D U, thirty-five natural wood siding. Thirty-six is light source. Shielding down facing, thirty-seven right away encroachments, thirty-six landscape inspection, thirty-nine drainage, drainage plan and. Then forty was regarding the privacy impact and this is maintain the vegetation as it currently exists, so. I didn't hear any other conditions that the commissioners felt need to be added to mitigate any impacts. The problems with this, so do we have a motion to accept the resolution as presented by staff?
Yeah, I can make a resolution or make a motion for accepting the resolution as described by staff, including all the special and typical conditions. So I move to approve this project.
Okay, do we have a second on that?
I can second that.
Okay, the motion has been made by Commissioner Bolton, seconded by Commissioner Allen, do we have? This, this is for, to support the resolution as presented by staff with no changes, okay, do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, we have roll call please.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolton?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Chair LaPage?
Yes, okay, the motion is carried, thank you everyone. Okay, the next item on our, the public carries tonight is item number eight. This is a design review two, one dash three, two, seven and a use permit two, one dash three, two, seven. This is the Scandia Lopez project, it's consideration of a design, design review, use permit associated coastal development permit. For additions totaling two thousand four hundred and sixty-one square feet to the historic commercial building known as the Percy Parks Building. This is to create three new units located on Dolores Street for southwest of Ocean Avenue and central. Commercial downtown conservation district, we have the staff report please.
Uh, Mr. Chair, you certainly could if Marnie was here, you know, as always, the planning commission is so efficient, you've gone faster than we had hoped you would. You have a couple of options, I'd like to give you either to perhaps call a bio break until six o'clock and see if Marnie's back. Or, and then at that point, if she's not back, we can do orders of business, Ida, part number two. I think she may be back, I've been monitoring the city council meeting on my phone. Or you could, you could move up orders of business part two right now. And if Marnie's not back by the time that item's over, then you could take the bio break, so I'll leave it to you, Mr. Chair, but we do need to do an adjustment at this point, one way or the other.
Okay, I think what I'm gonna do is call for a, a recess, a break till six o'clock. So we will reconvene the planning commission meeting at six o'clock. Everybody coming back here?
Mister Chair, before Leah does roll call, just give you a heads up, Marnie is still in council. Just looking at the, I was just listening while we were on break, it looks like they are kind of in wrapping up their comments, so I think if you're okay with it. We can go to orders of business number two and then she should be back by then, but we tell Leah does the roll call and then you can make sure that's okay with everybody.
Okay, can we have the roll call?
Commissioner Allen?
Here.
Commissioner Bolton?
Hello.
Commissioner Delves?
Here.
Commissioner Locke?
Here.
Chair LaPage?
Here, okay, all the commissioners are present, we are resuming our meeting, so. So you're going to do the orders of business number four?
That's correct, agenda, which was originally agenda item number four.
Right.
Yes.
So it's okay, so at this time, we, on our agenda, we will do the orders of business number four, so you're gonna give that report?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, and this, this is really a conversation, I don't have a PowerPoint for you. You may recall, in recent times, we've had some conversations here with you between staff and the planning commission about when is it appropriate? For staff to bring a project back that has been previously approved by the planning commission. Bring that project back for a change to the project, we've sort of tried to find a, a, a place where we all feel comfortable with that. You know, trying to strike that balance, keeping the process moving and, and simple. But also protecting the integrity of decisions that the planning commission makes here. Some of the things we've talked about as a group is, you know, if the house will look appreciably different than what the planning commission approved. That's, that's sort of where we're at right now in the world, is that if, you know, changes. Add up or a change is, is large enough, despite whether it could be approved at the staff level. If that change will result in the house looking different than it would have looked when approved by the planning commission, that's one thing. That's a line that we've been using at the staff level, say, you know what, we could approve this at the staff level, but we're gonna elevate this to the planning commission. On the other end of the spectrum, what we've been doing is simple changes to a previously approved planning commission item. Things like, you know, changing one window, maybe a slide, the size changes slightly or it shifts over a little bit. Those are things under the code that, that are track one type of project. And if that project, if that project came in on its own, like someone came into us with a, an existing house already done. So let's say they finished the house that the planning commission approved, they built it, final that and everything. And then they came to us the very next day and applied to move that window over the three inches. That would just be a staff level approval, it'd be a track one staff level design approval. So we've been sort of, you know, wrestling with that because like I said, we really wanna keep the process. Moving along and simple because we have a lot of projects to get through and. You know, in all fairness, it takes time to get through the process how it is, so to make somebody go back to the planning commission for a small change, we're trying to be considerate. However, like I said, we really do wanna protect the integrity of the decisions that are made here, especially when it comes to design. So some things to consider, and I, I guess I should say the upshot here is. I'm not asking you to make any decisions tonight, the only decision I'm asking you to make is whether or not you would like me to agendize this for the next meeting. Because I, we can't really make a decision unless there's an agenda and I would, I would probably write a staff report for the next one, so that way the public can get involved if they want. But what I'd like to talk about tonight is one, does the planning commission have an appetite to formalize this a little bit more either? And I would need to do some more research, either as a, just, you know, department policy or perhaps putting it in the zoning code. Depending on what we would have to do, so that's the first question, is, does the planning commission wanna go down a, a road of making the decision a little bit more formal? Of when things come back to the planning commission and if yes, are you, I mean, I would ask that you direct staff to put that on a future agenda. If no, if you don't, if you don't want to, if you would just wanna keep going how we're going, we don't have to do anything. But some things to consider while, while we're talking about it and then I'll get into what my sort of like rough proposal would be for us to talk about next time. Things to consider, you know, what, what level does the individual modification rise to, as I mentioned in my example? The way we're treating it is that if the individual proposal from somebody changing a planning commission approval is just a simple, you know, moving the window over. What would that normally rise to under normal circumstances? But the other thing we think about when we're doing this is the, the cumulative effect, so, you know, twenty window changes. All three or four inches does change appreciably what the house looks like. Or if they all shrink or grow or things like that, so we, we try to be cognizant of that as well when we're doing that. And then the question that I've been sort of. And then the question that I've been sort of wrestling with is, should after the fact be treated differently than? You know, coming to ask for permission. So, you know, maybe one thing for you to think about. Coming back and I would ask for today, if we do decide to come back with this, some, there's some guidance of what you might want to see in, in my plan. In our plan for how we bring things back, which I'll talk about a little bit. So you can definitely give me feedback, but we can't make any decisions tonight. So. Thinking about things like that, are there any, any components of a change to a planning commission? Approved project that would maybe rise above others like and after the fact, if someone. You know, changed it and then came to us and said, oh, by the way, we changed this thing. We've built it before we even done. And we want to get your permission for it. Would we treat that differently? Like maybe those always have to come back to the planning commission. I don't know. So those are some things to consider. We do have a somewhat relevant model already when it comes to the historic resources board. So one of the functions of, of my team here is to do a preliminary determination of eligibility. For our local register and the process that's laid out, and this is laid out in the zoning code, the process is laid out is. Our staff makes a determination either after consulting with a historical expert or just based on the record where it's really cleared us. We make a determination of whether or not a, a home that may be coming up for remodel or something is eligible for listing. And there's specific criteria that we go through. That's everything. But when that decision is made at the staff level, the code guides us to. Not only notices to the public like we would do for track one. So like all track one design approvals, like the, my example of moving a window over three or four inches. If that rises to attract one, we still do a public notice for that. There's a 10 day appeal period. Where they can appeal, where someone from the public can appeal that simple project to you, the planning commission. Approved staff level. So going back to the HRB example, we have a 10 day appeal period. And within that 10 days, we also have to send an email to our HRB board, HRB members. That says, you know, dear HRB, we've made this decision. Here's the project. We've determined it's ineligible. Here's why. We have a whole report that we put together. And if, if any of you don't agree with that, then please let us know and essentially just call it up. For a public hearing. And it doesn't happen very often. I don't think it's actually happened but once in the, you know, two years I've been here. And it wasn't that. That, that the staff was wrong. It was that the, you know, the, the HRB felt that it warranted a public discussion. So that's, that's under the purview of the HRB. So I would, you know, I would suggest maybe that's something for you to think about if we want to formalize this process a little bit more. That when there's a change. To a previously approved planning commission project, I guess before it's final. That staff would send that email. So you know, dear planning commission, we received. This, this request to move one of the windows and there'd be a plan because we have to get plans anyway. Remove one of the windows on a project that you previously approved over three inches. We are planning to approve this at the staff level. It's currently within the 10 day appeal period. Please let us know if you'd like to refer this up to the planning commission and the code does give me the director, the authority to do that. On my own accord. So if one of you wrote back to us and said, we want to see this, I would then just exercise my authority to elevate it to the planning commission. So I don't think we'd have to change anything from that perspective. So that's sort of the conversation I'd like to have tonight. Before we come back with something formal, like actually put a, a policy in front of you, but I wanted to one, take your temperature. And see if it's something that the planning commission is even interested in digging a little bit deeper into. Cause I have heard concerns both from a couple of members of the planet commission and also from the public. Cause I think the public puts a lot of trust. In the decisions that the planning commission makes that that's the project that's going to get built. And obviously this is a much more public forum to discuss any changes to that, even though we are, as I mentioned, we are noticing. Those changes through our track one process, it's just not as public facing as we might see otherwise. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll. Stop babbling and see, you know, if, if the planning commission wants to provide some feedback on this.
Okay. Thank you, Brandon. Yeah, I think I'll just start calling on the commissioners and see what they have to say. Commissioner Dells, what, how do you, what are your thoughts about this?
I'm kind of mixed, mixed really. You, our agendas are pretty full. And I think we got a lot more stuff coming at us. So I'm, you know, I'm not, I'm certainly not looking for more tiki tacky. Work and I, that's not what you're proposing, Brandon. I get it. But it really is drawing the line in the right place. Because we have also seen examples of. Significant and cumulatively significant changes. To things that were approved. I, I will say that I, I had 18 months on the commission. I have, I don't think I've seen anything come back. On projects that were approved in that 18 month period or changes that happened on, since you've been here, Brandon. And. And I, I don't really, I don't really know what the previous regime was, was like and how tolerant or, you know, open it was to make it to allowing changes. But I will say, you know, based on my experience so far. I, I don't have evidence that significant changes are happening. 18 months. So maybe we've turned a page already. I think the other commissioners who've been here longer can form an opinion on that. I think. I, I, I will say I'm interested in seeing it written down. I'm happy to put it on a few, future agenda. But I, I want to be reacting to something that is really completely written and put together. And, you know, my input on. Where to draw that line would be, I want to thank my wife for printing something next to me here. Anyway, I, you know, I want to draw the line so that we're not wasting a lot of time and it's not tiki tacky. It's material. So.
Okay. Thanks, Commissioner Dells. Commissioner Locke, your thoughts?
Um, yeah, I actually agree with that. And I do think there are times that we have. Changes that occur to a planning commission approved project. And it probably does need to come back. Brandon, I think that you and. The chair of the commission. Do you mean on a fairly regular basis to talk about what projects might need additional review, which would be my suggestion?
You know, we don't, that could be something that the, the commission could suggest that, that it starts at the, you know, the director and the chair level and. Yeah, that, that sort of my head was at with the, you know, just sending an email saying, dear, dear commission, here's a change that's happening. Let us know if it's something you're concerned about, but we could. Could start with the chair and then the chair could be the one to send the email perhaps.
Yeah, I think that would be my preference would be that, that just kind of a, I don't know, agenda setting discussion. And kind of keeping us informed because, you know, unless we're looking at the website on a regular basis, we're not necessarily aware of what's going through the staff level. And but, yeah, I mean, I.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say, and that was, that was sort of my, my initial thought with this is that I would guess, I would guess. That 99% of the emails that we would send, say, you know, we're moving this window over, you would just look at the email and say, okay, cool. And not worry about it. And I, I just, I, I think it would almost give some comfort to the commission. And the public in a way that, you know, we, we're not making changes to the planning commission decisions that are significantly altering. And so there would be a process in place. And on that 1% chance, it would get called up and there'd be a public hearing on it. So that, that was, that's generally the concept is that there's. You know, I'm big on communications. I think this is another way to create a line of commu- communication so that everybody knows what's going on.
Yeah. And the, the other thing that I would comment on is just, um, after the fact. Request for approval. And those are extremely concerning to me. And. Yeah, I, I. I think any of those probably need to come through. Well, okay, except for a small window. But I think point those out to us and that should be something that comes back.
Okay. Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Allen, your thoughts?
So I always favor a formalized process. I would like to be able to empower the staff to be able to make those. Approvals through the track one, but we should probably define some sort of measure or metric that. To Brandon's point, if it's, if it's, you know, starts to get more and more. Cause we've seen, I've seen a couple now, I think, just in this, in the two meetings where. It's either after the fact or changes have occurred and. And we need to relook at it. So, so I, I do think this needs to be an agenda item. I do think we need to discuss it. And I do think we need a formalized process to determine how we want to do, go about this. I will agree with Commissioner Locke. I'm not a fan of after the fact and it, that, that one really concerns me.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bolton, your thoughts?
Basically, I agree. I think it'd be nice to have a little more, something to respond to. I'm not really. Able to formulate a cogent recommendation right now. But basically I think that people who violate our rules and then don't bring the project back to. Staff level need to be dealt with at the planning mission level. So I think anybody who is, you know. I don't think, I don't agree with the adage that you should ask for forgiveness and not permission. I want people asking permission. If they don't ask permission, they should have some kind of consequence for that behavior. And if that means a longer process, because you have to go through a planning commission, so be it. So as far as like what level of change would rise to the level of our attention? I agree that there's some kind of potential for, you know, overworking us or whatever. I'm not in favor of a bunch of email. I get too many emails now. I will ignore your email, Brandon. I will ignore it. I won't see it. That's all there is to it. And that will defeat the purpose of that endeavor. And so I'm sorry, but I don't think that's appropriate, you know, way forward. I thought that the director and the chair met prior to the meetings in the past. Maybe that wasn't under you.
Yeah, we do, we do coordinate from time to time. We don't have a structured meeting, you know.
Okay, it's not like a set thing.
Yeah, when there's items on here that we need to coordinate about, you know, like we, he and I, you know, I met about this whole weird schedule thing that we're doing. Or if there's a contentious item and I want to make him aware of something, but, um, yeah, I mean, that would be, I think, to your point, Commissioner Bolton, that may be. The middle ground versus sending a bunch of emails is just, you know, the, the chair, whoever it is at the time and I, or who the director is can have a set meeting, you know, on.
I think that makes sense. It makes sense to have sort of a set, at least opportunity for a meeting each month prior to our hearings here because, you know, things come up. And even if you don't necessarily have to spend a lot of time on it, it seems to make sense to have something, you know, more or less regular. And that would give you a perfect opportunity to bring to the chair's attention, any of these issues that you are questioning, whether or not they rise to the level of. You know, the whole planning commission consideration. And I'm very confident here can make that decision in conjunction with you and the rest of the staff. So I think it's, I think we have to make this more formal and I think we're on the right track, but I don't think we can go very far tonight with it.
Yeah, thank you. And I, you know, I just want to, I just want to reiterate, like I have, I have a hundred percent confidence in my staff and frankly, in myself being able to understand where that line is, I think. I don't think, I know, but, um, you know, I'm always, I'm always trying to look at ways to make our process more transparent and make the public feel like we really are. We are really are protecting, you know, like I said, the decision that the planning commission has made. I, I, I'm confident we haven't approved anything, at least in a year and a half that I've been here that. That we weren't comfortable or able to do at our level, but I, I think it's nice to have these conversations sometimes and make sure that the process doesn't even touch up to make it more accessible to the public. So thank you for all those comments.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to say that I, the two things that I'm concerned about are cumulative changes and after the fact changes. And I think all the other commissions have expressed that same thing. And we have had some examples of that happening. And, um, but I am confident that the staff can identify that when that's happening. A lot of times when there are a lot of cumulative changes, you start to have a neighbor taking notice. We've had situations like that. So, uh, which just illustrates that the public is paying attention to what we're doing. So, uh, you know, the thing that we always have to do, even though we are confident in our abilities and I, and I, and I respect everybody's ability here. I know everybody takes us their work very seriously, but we also have to always present. An opportunity and an appearance that the public is being involved in our decisions. This adds to our credibility. And, and you know, it's in our credibility is just based upon the public's perception of that. And I think we need to work at all times to maintain that credibility. If that means going a little bit further than we have to. To review some of these things. And that's just, that's just part of the process. That's what we have to do. So. Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable as a chair and I think other chairs would be comfortable being alerted. To some possible things and Brandon and I do discuss things. That are on the, coming up on the agenda. We don't, we don't do a formal meeting every time because we just don't really need to. But obviously when there are, are items on the agenda, which we are believe are going to have a lot of public comment. We may get our heads together to make sure that the public understands what we're trying to do that evening, because sometimes they don't. And also make sure that we run the meeting in such a way that everybody has an opportunity to be heard. And so those are the things that we, we usually try to focus on between Brandon and myself. Or if he needs to explain something to me, which has changed like we had tonight. So I'm comfortable doing that. I would not want to send an email. Because first of all, I think there's a Brownback Act violation on my part. If I sent out a, an email blast to all the rest of the commissioners, I would always depend on. Staff to do that. And I think that's the correct way to do that. So. I, you know, I don't really feel like this is a huge problem. I mean, I mean, I, I think staff has, has brought the stuff to us. That's been cumulative or after the fact to the commission. And I think they, they have a good idea of when things need to come back to the commission, when it. You know, represents a significant change to the, the project in some way. Or that's going to have an impact, potential impact on the neighbors. So. I'm not really sure we need to have any more discussion on this. And I don't know how really effectively we can formalize this. You know, any more than we already do. We have a track one or track two, you know, process. So. I think the, the situation with HRB is a little bit more. Proceduralized because they're dealing with a specific historical issue. And there's, you know, there's a separate government agency, uh, you know, department that deals with that. Outside of our particular municipal code and guidelines. So it's a little bit different situation, but those are my thoughts on it for now. So.
Great. Well, thank you all. I, I took, I took, I think I got what I needed. It sounds like, and I guess I'll look for heads up and down here. It sounds like, you know, we can, we can put something on the agenda for next time, even if that's to come back and say, you know, we're gonna. I'll just, maybe the outcome is I just, I'd have a more regular meeting with the chair and just let him know about things that have been approved at the staff level. So I can come back next agenda unless I see heads go east and west saying no, but it sounds like at least something minor to just kind of wrap this up in a bow. Cause I have heard from the public that they, this is a concern from some people. So I wanted to address it.
Well, I think we probably need to agendize this so the public can weigh in.
Correct. Yeah, that's what I would do for the next time. Yeah.
Regardless where we go with it. They, we need to get the public's comment, get them involved.
Okay, can do. Thank you. And I see, uh, we now have our illustrious principal planner back. From the other, her other meeting.
Survive that other meeting. Hope they were good to you, as good as we are. Uh, okay. So that brings us back to. God, we're on item number eight?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
You're doing great.
I'm getting vertigo, I'm getting vertigo here, Brandon, from your change. All right. Okay. So we are, the next public hearing item is going to be item number eight. This is a design review. Two, one dash, three, two, seven, and a use permit, two, one dash, three, two, seven. So it's consideration of.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, excuse me. Okay. This is consideration of a. Design review and use associate, associated coastal development for additions located totaling 2,461 square feet to a historic commercial building. Known as the Percy Parks Building to create three new units located on Dolores Four South East of Ocean Avenue. And the commercial central district and downtown conservation districts. We have the staff report, Marnie. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Chair LaPage. So before you, this evening is a. Project. Associated with the historic Percy Parks Building. It is located on Dolores Four Southeast of Ocean Avenue. As just mentioned, it's in the central commercial as well as the downtown conservation zoning districts. The existing one story commercial building is just over 2,700 square feet in size. And the proposed project includes two story additions, just over 2,400 square feet. And these additions would be for the establishment of three apartment units. As this is a historic building, the historic resources board is required to review the project. As this is a historic building, um, the Historic Resources Board is required to review the project uh, and adopt a determination of consistency with the Secretary of the Interior Standards. The board did find by a two-to-one vote that the proposed project is in line with historic preservation principles. So before the commission, um, today is the design review permit and the use permit. The design review is for the additions and exterior alterations. And the use permit is simply for the residential density, uh, because it is between 23 and 33 dwelling units per acre. So just as a reminder, the standard of review for projects in the commercial districts is whether the project constitutes an improvement over existing conditions and not just whether it meets minimum standards. Uh, I would say, though, the project is consistent with all standards. Uh, no exceptions are being asked for. Um, the commercial design guidelines also speak to projects respecting the history and traditions of the architecture in the commercial area, as well as preserving or restoring basic elements of design integrity uh, and ensuring that the, uh, those elements are consistent throughout the building. Building forms, uh, should complement the rhythms established by other buildings in the vicinity. And the materials and colors should respect the traditions already established in the commercial district. So these are the guiding principles, uh, that this project was reviewed, um, against. So again, the existing commercial building is a one-story building. As we saw on the tour of inspection today, uh, the story poles for the two-story additions are in place. Um, and they are nearly invisible, uh, from the public way. Uh, you do get just a glimpse of the ridge line if you're standing, uh, northwest of the building. Uh, and that's the, the red arrow, uh, that is pointing in that picture. Uh, so the project, uh, has been designed to be screened from public view in order to preserve the historic storefront and, and for the, the property to still read as a single-story building. Um, so the existing, um, existing building has an open courtyard, um, in the back. And the courtyard previously had a eucalyptus tree. Uh, that tree was suffering from termite damage and the city forester did approve the removal. Um, so that tree, um, is now gone. Only the stump remains. Uh, it is this location where a new two-story building would be constructed and would house two apartments. The apartments would be 642 square feet each. Um, oops. On the ground floor, uh, within the commercial space, a new corridor would be constructed. Uh, this would be a fire-rated corridor, and this would be to meet the, uh, emergency egress requirements for the new residential use. The third apartment is the second-story addition on top of the existing commercial building. Uh, this unit is over 1,100 square feet, um, and would have a roof deck that would fill in the space between the ridge line of the existing commercial building, um, and the apartment. So the applicant did provide us with a line of sight diagram. Um, this diagram is due west on Dolores Street, so standing right across the street, uh, looking up at the building. Uh, the addition has, has been set back far enough, uh, that it is not visible. The existing, uh, roof pitch at the front of the building is a six and 12. Um, and the applicant is proposing, uh, a very modest pitch at two and a half and 12. Um, again, just to keep the height lower, um, and keep these additions while large really subordinate to that one-story appearance from the street. Uh, the project is required to manage, uh, rainwater on site. Uh, and the applicant has proposed a drainage pit at the rear of the building. Uh, this has been reviewed by our environmental, uh, compliance manager. Um, and she does believe that this is a workable solution for, uh, this property. The drainage pit would also double as a tree well. Uh, the city forester is, um, less confident that a tree will thrive, um, in this location. Uh, but she is willing to, uh, give it a go. Um, and if the, the tree does not survive, um, it could either be replanted or an in-loofe can be paid, uh, to satisfy that requirement. So this here, uh, shows just the existing building elevations, um, as well as the, the courtyard. Uh, no changes are proposed to the historic storefront. Um, there is a minor modification that will need to be implemented for the door swing, uh, because they currently swing inwards. Uh, and the fire code requires them to swing outwards for emergency egress. Um, there are some historic preservation guidelines on how to do this while preserving, um, the historic doors. And that's been included, uh, in the conditions of approval. With the addition of three apartments, uh, fire suppression system is also required. Uh, and there's a condition of approval that speaks to the screening of that equipment. We don't know at this stage in the process how that's going to be accomplished, but we do want to minimize any alteration to the front of the building, uh, to the greatest degree possible, while also screening that equipment from public view. So the proposed, um, building elevations, this kind of gives you, uh, an idea of what the project looks like from the interior. The applicant is proposing a cement plaster finish, uh, similar to what is there now. Um, but it will be differentiated very subtly. The paint color will be in the same color range, but will not be an identical match. Um, also, the applicant originally proposed asphalt shingle roofing. Again, in order to achieve that differentiation. However, the historic consultant felt that the Spanish tile roof would be more import, uh, appropriate. Um, but that it also should be differentiated by using a different tile dimension. The applicant has selected, um, a product for the tile and that has been attached to the staff report. So these are some perspectives, um, of the addition. Obviously, this is, uh, looking down on that second-story apartment and the proposed roof deck. This is a view from the back of the building, so you can see the proposed two-story building with the two smaller apartments. Uh, there would be an elevator to provide access as well as stairs, um, in an outside corridor. This is a section view, so the two-story building would be sort of behind us, kind of looking west. Um, you can see the different levels and how, uh, folks would access the apartments. And this is the drainage pit where the future tree would be planted. Uh, and then just a front elevation of that two-story building at the rear of the property. Uh, so prior to the meeting, uh, staff did receive some public comments from an adjacent, uh, business owner. Uh, they had expressed some concerns with the construction-related impacts, including dust, noise, and vibration. I think we all understand, uh, that construction can be terribly inconvenient. And the, the concern is the impacts that it will have on, on neighboring businesses. The city currently doesn't have adopted standards for construction management plans. Um, however, the planning commission could consider a special condition um, and direct the applicant to prepare a plan and bring that back to the commission for review and approval, um, if you find that that is appropriate. Also, just want to remind you, our permitted construction hours are 8:00 AM to 6:30 PM, Monday through Saturday. Um, and some other items that, um, if you do ask for a construction management plan that we might also want to address would be the parking of construction vehicles, um, along Dolores. The hauling of construction debris, and then how to manage, uh, material deliveries. So we know this is a very, uh, busy, active, uh, section of Dolores. Uh, so with that, staff is recommending that you adopt a resolution approving the design review, the use permit, and the associated coastal development permit. And then just asking for consideration of whether to add a special condition for a construction management plan. And with that, um, I will conclude my presentation and I'm available for questions.
Okay, do the commissioners have any questions for staff?
I do.
Mr. Delbs?
Um, on the topic of construction management plan, um, probably more for Brandon. Um, do we, do we never have them? Have we, have we ever had them? Um, I mean, I'm not interested in a construction management plan coming back to us. Um, because I don't much, we have the skills to judge it. Well, some of you do. I don't. But it would just, I, I would think that that would be a normal staff function.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Delbs. Yeah, I think, um, to answer your question, so I've been a year and a half now and that was one of the first things I, I queued in on when, when I got here and talking to our public works director is that we don't have a requirement right now for construction management plans. It is something that I'm looking at with my team as part of the, you know, design traditions update and the zoning code update, making that an actual requirement, because I do think it's very important. Uh, especially given, you know, the small streets that we have in town, both residential and commercial districts. I think it's really important. So it is something in the future that I foresee, as long as that stays in our edits, will become a requirement. I think this is a poster child for needing a construction management plan. But I agree with you. I, you know, I, other places I have worked, I feel that that is more of a, a staff level between the planning director and the public works director to sign off on a, a real construction management plan that will do the job. And we have some things in our code already that, like Marty pointed out about the hours of construction and things like that. We would, you know, i- in my opinion, a construction management plan focuses on the things that are unique about the site that we want to control. Um, I think one thing the commission could do is include a special condition that says, uh, prior to issuance of a building permit, a construction management plan will be submitted for review and approval by the city. Um, giving obviously leave to myself and the public works director and anyone else we pull in on it to give approval of it. So that would be my suggestion, if you're inclined, uh, to put a construction management plan condition on this project.
Thank you.
We have in the past put conditions on projects regarding, uh, the cutting of stone off-site to minimize dust, things like that.
So Chair LaPage, I just had a question, um, just out of curiosity, um, with this, with the layout that they have in this, um, if there were a fire, the residents in the back would have to somehow get through the front building out? I didn't quite understand. Is that how it's set up?
That, that is correct. So it will be a fire-rated corridor, uh, so it does provide protection, um, for folks to exit the building. The building will also be sprinkled, uh, which also helps to give time for exiting.
Okay, so yeah, I, I heard when you presented that, I just didn't realize that that's, um, how, um, I mean, because there's no other exits, correct? I mean, that's it, right? They can only go out the front.
That, for the, for the two in the back, um, yes, that's, that is what the, the corridor is for. Um, it, there's also the, the apartment above has access to the roof deck, um, and can also exit that way.
Gotcha. Okay. And then the concern that came from the business next door, it did reference some sort of fireplace. I don't know if you saw that in the email, but it did reference that. I don't know what they were talking about because I did not see a fireplace. But, um, I did want to bring it to your attention.
Okay, all right. Are there any other questions for, uh, staff regarding this application? Okay, hearing, oh, Commissioner.
So is, is, uh, just procedurally, is this a design study? And does this come back to us or is this all one?
No, this is a one-time shot.
Yeah, got it.
This is a design study and a use permit.
Good, thank you.
Okay. It's, it's different from the, uh, the residential. We have design and then the final. Okay, um, all right, uh, John Mandarago, you are the architect. Would you like to make your presentation?
Well, I, I don't have too much of a presentation because, uh, I've read the staff report and with its conditions. And I, I think, uh, Marty did a great job, so I really don't have a lot to add to that. Um, I do have one question, which I'd like to reserve for later on the procedure, but, um, yeah, I, I'm happy to take any questions.
So are there questions for John, the architect? You, you don't want to get your question out there now, John, so we can get a heads up on it?
Uh, while we're at the site meeting this afternoon, uh, I was talking to, uh, Marty and she mentioned that there was a way to, uh, for the client to achieve a, uh, a legal Airbnb, a short-term rental on this property. And so I was kind of interested on that. And I, my question is, if, if, uh, we, we get approved tonight, uh, I would like to talk to her a little bit more and try to understand exactly what she was saying. And so if we get approval tonight, uh, would that, uh, exclude us from pursuing the, uh, Airbnb, the short-term rental idea?
Would you like us to?
Yeah, right. Yeah, I mean, the staff want to answer that question now?
Um, I, I'm sure Marty, because it sounds like Marty already had a conversation with Mr. Mandarago. But just, just in general principle, I mean, if it's something that requires a use permit, whatever's approved tonight, you know, someone can always apply to amend the use permit. Um, but Marty, you want to talk a little bit to the, the conversation there about where, where the ability to have a short-term rental comes from?
Yeah, so as I would, and I apologize to John, we, we hadn't had a chance to, to talk about, um, this, uh, prior to the hearing. So as I was writing the staff report, um, I realized that under our new, uh, newer transient rental ordinance, anytime you create three units, um, you actually qualify for a fourth unit that could be a short-term rental. Uh, as Brandon mentioned, it does require approval of a conditional use permit. Uh, so the applicant would need to, uh, make application for that use permit. Um, he also would need to increase, uh, the size of two of the units to 650. He's not too far off, so he could probably achieve that. He also has the option of whether or not he wants to provide that short-term rental on-site or on another site, uh, within the commercial districts in the community. Um, and so all of that would be addressed under, uh, a use permit. Um, just due to the design constraints that we have gone through, um, different iterations of this project. I, I don't know if four units could be accommodated on-site, but it's certainly something that we could, we could look at.
All right, John, is that answer your questions this time? You, you have the option, if you want to, if whatever our decision is, you can come back and apply for.
I, I'm not sure. I was just, uh, wanted to explore that, but just to put it out of our minds, but, so we're happy with what we have at the moment. I just.
Okay, all right. Okay, so you're, you're done with your presentation?
Shut any doors.
All right, you're, you're done with your presentation?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, John. Okay, uh, do you have a question?
Yeah, I had some questions for John.
All right.
Uh, John, I'm, I am curious, uh, I know that the construction of the condo across the street um, was very disruptive to Dolores Street for a long period of time. And in this case, you actually have to go through an existing building to create these new buildings. Do you have, how, how is that, how are materials and whatnot going to be? Um, are they going to be walked through the existing building to build these new ones? What's the access? Um, it just seems like it's much more complicated than what happened across the street.
Yeah, well, uh, unlike the project across the street, they, they actually had an operating restaurant on the lower level.
That's true.
Yeah, yeah, we, we have two vacant spaces and we could load our debris in one, stack our debris in one unit and then put our, our materials on the other unit. Uh, so it, it's actually going to be a lot easier than in what they had.
Okay, and, and I guess, uh, let's see, the other question I had for you was, um, yeah, I think the fire suppression screening was mentioned. And, um, I think that is a critical, um, part of our downtown community where, um, we have a. we have a very ugly-looking fire sprinkler suppression system next door to Sadie's, a block down. And across the street, they were able to, to do a very good job of screening. So I think whatever ends up, however you end up doing it, I, I would like to see it so that it's not something that is visible.
Yes, that would be our goal, too.
Okay, thank you.
By the way, to put people's minds at ease, we had, when I first started this project, I had concerns about passing the fire regulations and ordinances. And so I, I met twice with the person that's in charge, he was at the Monterey Fire Station. I went down, actually talked to the fire marshal two times, and he, you know, he blessed the layout for safety.
Okay, all right, I'm going to close the, open it up to the public for their comments. Is there anyone from the public that would like to make any comments to the planning commission?
John Plastini, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Plastini.
Yes, this is John Plastini, T S D Carmel Properties. Our tenant is the one that sent the email to Marty and in, in reference to concerns about noise, which I understand, I'm a general contractor by trade, yes, there's going to be noise. But the dust abatement, there is intakes that come in as far as makeup air, which is a concern. And the one commissioner that had a question referencing the fireplace, the fireplace that tenant was speaking to is a gas-fired fireplace that's in the center area of Carmel Bell, that's what we're looking at. So I think they were concerned if that's off, could dust come down into their eating area? I don't know how much dust would be generated, not sure about the excavation plan. The other concern that we do have is the building that Carmel Bell's located, it was built in nineteen twenty-eight, and that foundation is right up against their foundation. I'd like to know how they're going to mitigate undermining the foundation, that's the same area where that huge Uqulipish tree is, that's going to have to be excavated out. And then the other questions I have, because at the site, will they need access to our roof to access the common area walls? It doesn't look like there's any room, there's no setback. So I would request if there would be a construction management plan, so we can be a good neighbor and understand the timeline and what can be expected as far as, with the excavation, is there going to be any pile driving or anything like that, that we can communicate to our tenants? To be good neighbors, I, I'm in favor of the project, but I think we just want to be informed more than anything else, and those are my concerns.
Thank you, John. Okay, is there anybody else in the public that would like to address the planning commission regarding this application? Let's see any hands going up. Nobody calling in. Okay, I'm going to close the public comments, open it up to the commission for their comments. Commissioner Bolton, you want to kick it off?
Yeah, sure. First of all, I'm very pleased to have new housing permit, long-term rental housing being proposed for a city of Carmel, we need this very badly. And I think the location and the use of this space, interior portion of a commercial lot is extremely helpful and appropriate, and a model for future development for a city. I think we need more of this essentially. So I'm encouraged and pleased with this presentation. I don't have any real issue with any of the visual aspects of it. I don't think it's especially impactful to the street. You can see a tiny corner of the roof peeking over, but it's really nothing. Mostly, I think I would like to speak about the construction management issue. More and more people are bringing this up in meetings in the general residential area. And obviously, it's an exceptional problem in commercial and service commercial districts, because we have increased traffic and the public in those areas. So I think this particular project would benefit greatly from such a plan. And I think in general, I encourage the staff and the director to keep pursuing their desires and movements towards actually requiring construction management plans on most, if not all, projects. Certainly, some projects, the plan would be exceptionally simple. But there are definitely cases where we have exceptional impacts to neighbors, and we need to make it that possible. And I think a plan written down and accessible to the public for review prior to our meetings and included in our meetings would be helpful. So, that being said, I support this project. I think it's, I think it's great. I really want to see a lot of this. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Bolton. Commissioner Allen, would you like to give your comments?
Sure, I appreciate the fact that it just maintains the street view. And, and they've done a very nice job of planning around that, just one-story, one-level building in the front. Thanks a lot for addressing my concerns around the fire. And I totally agree, love the concept of new housing, and also of coming up with some construction management plan, criteria, so that we can be assured that things run smoothly.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Allen. Commissioner Locke, would you like to make your comments?
So I agree with my fellow commissioners to begin with, thank you. And I think this is an awesome project that provides housing, and it also preserves a historic resource. And so, Mr. Mandrago, I think that, that you should be commended for that. And I think that the construction management plan is definitely in order in this case, particularly in this very, very busy street. And that we'll let the director of our community development deal with that as part of the building permit process. And we need housing very much, and I think this has to be what we encourage on and on. The fact that you can't see three units from the street, there's no impact, is to me just absolutely amazing. And I think that the more we can support these types of projects, the better, we desperately need it. And yeah, my only other comment had to do with making sure that the fire system was screened, and I just, I'm very pleased, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Delbs, your comments, please.
Yeah, no, nothing to add. I love the project, I'm supportive of it, and want to see it proceed. My only comment on the construction management plan is, in this particular case, Brandon, I, I do think that Mr. Plastini is, as a, a neighbor sharing a wall, as well as the neighbors on the left and the right, should be invited to participate in that planning process. I, I know you don't want to invite the whole street, because you'll never get to go, but I, I think that the immediate neighbors really will probably, they'll be good neighbors, as Mr. Plastini said, and, and figure out how to make it better. So, other than that, I'm, I'm good.
Thank you, Commissioner Delbs. We'll take that, take that note. In other places I've worked, we've always involved the adjacent neighbors in the construction management plan, so thank you for that.
Okay, I think the commissioner's done a good job of discussing this. I don't really have anything to add. I think staff, I support staff's findings on this. This is obviously something our community needs, housing, rental housing, which is ultimately more affordable, and I think more flexible for maintaining residences downtown. So we have a resolution.
Chair, could I make one more comment, please?
Yes, go ahead, while I'm looking at this.
Yeah, I figure I can give you a break. This is in regards to the short-term rental question. I am not supportive in general in short-term rental, certainly in the residential, but in the commercial, there are occasions when it is appropriate. Obviously, this application does not include that, and the use permit does not include that. But if the applicant were to come back with a new application, that would be the way I see forward for an opportunity to include a fourth unit. Is that basically correct, Director Swanson? Like, they can't, at this point with this approval, do anything beyond what we've approved? They have to basically come back with a new idea?
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah, great.
That's correct.
So I encourage you, applicant, if you wish to do so, to come back to us, but I support this project, it stands now, and I think it's excellent. Thank you.
Okay, we have a resolution from the staff with special conditions, which we have the pre-construction meeting. We have the exterior wall paint additions. The roof tiles, we spoke about those differentiated, existing roof tiles, provided dimensions, fire suppression systems. Twenty-five is the existing commercial storefront doors and frames. Should be maintained, preserved, and then number twenty-six is the apartment units, as a deed restriction that these should be maintained as three independent apartment units. So I didn't really hear anything from the commissioners wanting to add anything other than the construction management plan, so. So would, Mr. Bolton, would you like to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion that we approve this project after presented by staff inclusive of the special and common conditions with an addition, requesting a construction management plan be worked out between the director of public works, the director of planning, and the owners and designers of this project, and potentially, I would hope to see the neighbors as well.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded to accept the staff's resolution with the addition that a special condition that a construction management plan should be submitted. Okay, any further discussion? Senior hearing, a roll call, please.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolton?
Yes.
Commissioner Delbs?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Chair LaPage?
Yes, okay, the motion is carried. Thank you, everyone.
Mr. Chair, can I ask, I know it's kind of unusual, but could I ask, I think on Marty's behalf, to have a quick five-minute break? She went from meeting to meeting and didn't have the benefit of the break that everyone else on this meeting got. Would you, would you benefit from a break? I'm trying to be sensitive to my, my team here, yeah? Maybe a five-minute break, Mr. Chair, if that's okay?
Why don't we just make it five after seven?
Okay.
That way it's even.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, is everybody back? Looks like it. Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Allen?
Here.
Commissioner Bolton?
Here.
Commissioner Delbs?
Here.
Commissioner Locke?
Here.
Chair LaPage?
Here. Okay. Okay, everyone's present. We're back up and running. But I think we, we can, do we finish up the public hearings? I think we did, didn't we?
Uh, no, no, sir, we do number nine.
Number nine. Nine? Number nine?
It's like the Beatles song.
Oh, really? Okay. Our last item, okay, this is a design study. It's a DS two-two dash zero-three-zero, the Witt Project. Consideration of an after the fact design study application associated coastal development permit for grading in excess of twenty-five cubic yards. Expansion of the lower living area and associated site improvements located on Carmel Street to northwest of Ninth Avenue in the R-one district. Have staff report, please.
Well, thank you, Chair LaPage. So this next item is a design study application for a project that is currently under construction. The Planning Commission originally approved the project back in August of two thousand nineteen, and it included demolition of an existing cottage and construction of a new two-story residence. The building permit was issued, excuse me, in October of two thousand twenty. And later that month, the city forester went out to inspect a tree in the backyard and determined that its removal was warranted. It's a very large tree, fifty-two inch Monterey pine. And while it was rated as significant a couple of years prior when we did the site assessment, the city forester found that it was in rapid decline, that it was suffering from a bark beetle infestation, and forty percent of the canopy was comprised of dead wood. So authorization to remove the tree was given. And then in May of two thousand twenty-one, the city issued a stop work order for exceeding the scope of work under the building permit. So in November of two thousand twenty-one, a building permit revision was applied for, and this included converting and expanding the lower level of the house for an ADU. And the reason why I mentioned the tree removal is because the project was originally designed around the tree and to accommodate the root systems of that tree. And when that tree failed and was removed, it opened up some opportunities to make some changes for the project. So the applicant is, is interested in converting a portion of the lower level to an accessory dwelling unit. The state law does permit up to half of the primary residence living space to be dedicated to an accessory dwelling unit. In this case, that would be eight hundred and seventy-four square feet. They are proposing seven hundred and eighty-one square feet. These revisions also include an expansion of the lower level living space for the primary residence. So the approved residence was two thousand one hundred and forty-two square feet in size. And with the addition of the ADU and kind of swapping of primary living space, the proposed residence would now be one thousand nine hundred ninety-seven square feet plus the seven hundred and eighty-one square foot ADU for a total square footage of two thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight square feet. The site plan identifies the layout of the lower level as it was approved by the Planning Commission back in two thousand nineteen. The green box represents a walkout patio, mostly enclosed, but an outdoor living space. The blue box represents the master suite as well as a laundry room and an office. The red box was not floor area originally. It was just the natural grade. And then the yellow box is where the mechanical room was proposed, and it had a ceiling height of less than five feet. So that area also did not count towards floor area. So the applicant is proposing to convert the patio, master suite, laundry and office as well as the, the natural grade, which is the red box, into the accessory dwelling unit. As we've discussed, this is a, this is typically a ministerial action that is done only under a building permit. The reason why, one of the reasons why we're talking about it today is because our code does state that excavation over twenty-five cubic yards does require a track two design study, which is a discretionary review. The mechanical space has also been converted into a bathroom for the primary residence, a bathroom and a hallway. This section view shows the grade. We're looking at the south elevation. The west is on the left, the east is on the right. And the red line shows what the approved grade was going towards the rear of the property. You can see where the mechanical crawl space was, and then this area was just natural grade. So what currently exists is this entire area has been excavated out. So you can see this is part of the ADU. This is part of the ADU, and then this is a new bathroom for the primary residence. So this area here, this area of excavation exceeds twenty-five cubic yards. Towards the rear here, the backyard, this is where the tree used to be. And with that tree removal, as you can imagine, fifty-two inch pine, a very large root ball was also removed. And so the applicant decided to go ahead and just excavate out the entire yard and make that more, more usable. So as I mentioned, grading in excess of twenty-five cubic yards requires a track two design study. The approved project grading was four hundred and fifteen cubic yards of cut with ten cubic yards of fill. What has been done to date is six hundred and ten cubic yards of cut with twenty cubic yards of fill. So the residential design guidelines speak to minimizing the extent of excavation and fill. This is primarily for the protection of tree roots. Guideline seven point two talks about minimizing building mass as seen from the public way or adjacent properties. So this encourages some floor area to be located below grade in order to reduce visual mass. And we often try to balance the goals of that below grade floor area with minimizing excavation. And then Residential Design Guideline three point four speaks to avoiding abrupt changes in grade between the site and adjacent properties. It recommends sloped planted areas and a smooth grade transition. So with the additional excavation that has taken place, the backyard elevation has been lowered by six point five five feet, roughly. The backyard is now surrounded with a six-foot metal retaining wall and a three-foot-six-inch wide planting strip is proposed between the top of that retaining wall and the property line. So a landscape buffer. Staff feels that the six-foot change in grade is abrupt. And so staff recommends that the backyard be terraced with additional landscaping to soften the transition. And that has been included as special condition number eighteen. So staff is recommending that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution approving an after the fact design study application. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for staff and the commissioners?
Yeah, so Marnie, I'm just trying to understand the, the, the lower grade by six and a half feet. Is the backyard now lower than the surrounding neighbors?
Correct.
So they've kind of, they've essentially created a hole back there? Okay. Need a visual, thank you.
And that, and that hole is to provide access to the ADU?
Um, so there, there is a set of stairs that on the south side yard that would provide access to that ADU. And the ADU would be a, a complete walkout.
Okay. Are there any other questions for staff?
Yeah, I, I had one question on the plans. On, on, so on A two, the plans show an ADU. And on page C three, it shows a junior ADU. Can someone explain that?
So originally, they did propose to do a junior ADU. However, they couldn't meet the requirements because they exceeded the allowable floor area. So they proposed instead to do a full accessory dwelling unit with a kitchenette.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for staff? Okay, it doesn't feel like we have any at this time. All right, would the applicant or the owner like to make their presentation to the planning commission at this time?
Hi, there.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, go ahead.
Okay, good. Sorry, my camera's not working, but thanks for giving me the opportunity to address the commission.
Okay, Eric, you're, you're gonna be speaking, Eric?
Yeah, let me, I would like to start it, and then the owners are here too, and I think they may have some comments.
Okay, go ahead.
So, um, Marnie did a great job describing the process. The very large tree was removed and quite a lot of earth was removed when we did that. So when we demoed the house and the tree was gone, the contractor put in temporary shoring three feet back from the north side, the south side and the west side because you need room to work around the foundation. And the original intention was to fill that space in after we're finished and, you know, move on. So right now what's up there is temporally shoring, and it's three feet setback from all three of those property lines in the backyard. As we were building, it became obvious we could do an ADU because when we started, it wasn't something that people could do, but we thought, wow, since we can do this, say to you, let's, we should, we should do it. So the shoring that's up right now is temporary shoring, so it's steel vertical beams with three-quarter inch or three and a half inch lagging in between it. So it's just pressure treated and, and steel I-beams. So when we realized we could do the ADU, we knew we had to have access to the back, so we had thought a stair on the south would be the right way to do that. And also, if we just left the, 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 the lower level, that means the ADU could have some yard instead of just, you know, having zero gardens, a couple of light wells. We thought, well, gosh, we should just leave this open because it would be a nice space. Also, the whole, you can't see it from the street at all. The house looks fairly de minimis. The houses on either side are tall or they're both two stories. And you can't see it from any of the neighbors' yards. And none of the dirt is excavated up to the property line. It's all three feet back. So if you look at the site plan, you'll be able to see. And so again, Marnie stated, we did take a lot of soil out for the root ball, but the other side had a walkout originally from the bedroom, and it had that lower porch that was covered. So that was going to have to be excavated also. So you know, we, we feel like, you know, the, the, you know, addition of a ADU is a helpful thing and certainly is something we hope you get, you can approve today.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Did, did the Wits, the Wits want to speak to us?
Yeah, hi, can you hear us?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
All right, we just wanted to say good evening to planning commissioner chair, planning commissioners and pending staff. We're Dylan and Tasha Witt, and we wanted to thank you for all your hard work on our project, our home build project. We're excited to live in Carmel, but see as full-time residents, and we just want to say thank you. Dylan, did you want to say something?
Um, I just wanted to reiterate what Eric had said is to, to, to put focus. The, the half of the yard that, that where the initial master bedroom was, that was already set up to be excavated, and there were already retaining walls in the plan on, on the, the north and south side. This is, is moving that south wall substantially, but that's where the root came out. But even in the original plan, there was excavation and retaining walls in place to, so that we could walk out of the, the master bedroom.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Witt. Eric had a question for you.
Yeah.
So do you want to comment on Marnie's suggestion about the terracing of the retaining walls?
Yeah, so we could terrace the retaining walls. So the retaining wall is currently, as I said, a wood and steel wall. But what we'd like to do instead is put horizontal teak on the walls, so it looks like a fence. And so from a standpoint of the person who lives in the ADU, who rents the ADU, he'll have a yard with a fence in it. We're open to, you know, maybe making a two-foot terrace, so the six-foot wall becomes a four-foot wall. But the terracing would only affect the livability of the ADU. It wouldn't affect the neighbors or the view or the, in any way, the ability for us to landscape. So if you think about it, Michael, and you look at the plan, the, the temporary retaining wall, the shoring, which we want to be a permanent retaining wall, is three feet back from the north property, from the west property and from the south property. So that means there's not an abrupt change directly on the property line. So, you know, we will be willing to terrace. I have talked to the Wits about that, but if it's something that commission really feels strongly about, but we were hoping that we could leave it at a lower level for the livability of the ADU.
And how much space will be, the yard will be left if, left if you did terrace it?
So if we terraced it, we would pull it in from the perimeter, I would say somewhere in the neighbor, neighborhood of two feet. So let me, let me look here. So I'm looking at the scale. Okay, so right now, if we didn't terrace it, the backyard would be twelve feet from the master bedroom. And if we did terrace it, you know, it'd be ten feet. So.
Okay, all right. Thanks, that answers my question. I apologize, I'm just not looking at the plans. It's a little limiting when you're doing it on the computer. Okay, are there any members of the public that would like to address the planning commission regarding this application? Okay, I don't see anybody raising their hands. I don't hear anybody. So I'm going to close the public comments. Bring it back to the commission for their comments. Mr. Dells, would you like to jump in?
Yeah, and I, I think anytime I see, you know, an after the fact approval, I get concerned that, that the rules were broken and, to quote somebody earlier today, applicants are asking for forgiveness instead of permission. I'm seeing a plausible story here of how these events unfolded that I think is okay. Driven largely by the tree and the tree removal and the opportunities that, well, just the result of, of that and excavation, further excavation that happened, that those retaining walls were there for excavation in the first place. So, I, I, you know, I'm, I'm, I, I, I think I'm okay with the sequence of events, even though we have an after the fact situation. With that, I think this might, so therefore I'm not, I'm not feeling the need to be punitive. I guess that's what I'm saying. And therefore I think we are where we are. And that bringing in truckloads of dirt to back to bring, to fill up the hole doesn't make sense because much of that excavation was approved anyway. It's just kind of moved around and it's bigger. So I, 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 I think I'm okay with this project as being proposed. Thanks.
Okay, okay, thanks, Commissioner Dells. All right, Commissioner Locke, want to make your comments?
Sure. Um, yeah, I'll, I'll agree with the start of Commissioner Dells' comment. Again, this was just discussed in our last item. And after the fact, do you have a local contractor?
Yeah, Paul Dobell.
Okay, I know Paul. So and Eric, you, you work here all the time. You should know that changing conditions require changes in your permitting process. And so the fact that you and and the contractor did not immediately stop work and go to the city and request changes, um, that that is disturbing. And Marty, you did not tell us about site coverage with these changes, and how is, is it still compliant with um, no site coverage? Because there's an increase in square footage?
So that that's a great question. Um, and I I don't have any specific numbers. Um, it appears that there would be a a net increase with the the fire pit patio and the stairs. Um, but the master suite patio has has been eliminated, so it might actually be a wash.
Okay, and so that would be one question I'd have. Actually, I think that that is critical. Um, at this point, I take it there is no actual construction underway? There's no foundation work yet? Is that correct?
So the area has been constructed. Uh, we did ask them to stop and not finish the space um, until they obtained approval. Um, but the the foundations, the walls, the forms are there.
And the storage room that was a bathroom that uh, now is not a bathroom, is there plumbing in that space?
There there is no plumbing in that space.
Okay, um.
We actually, do you mind, um, sorry, Eric, but Marty, do you mind confirming that?
Thanks, Marty. Um, yeah, I'm really sorry that the tree failed in fourteen months, that fourteen months previous design review, it was healthy, and fourteen months later, it's gone. Um, opening up some opportunities. Um, I just, I I am kind of flummoxed, but I don't have a problem with the change in plans. Um, I think, like I said, I think I'm more concerned about the fact that uh, you had local people who knew that they needed to make changes at the city and didn't do it. So um, anyway, I guess that's pretty much all I'm going to say about it. I don't really have any other comments.
Okay, um, Commissioner Allen, would you like to make your comments?
Uh, pretty much everything's been said. Um, I am a little bit confused in the timeline of events. Um, but I think, you know, um, we don't need to rehash things. Um, concerned about the fact that this is um, after the fact. And um, I, Marty, one question about the terracing. Did you have the same type of um, uh, thought that it would only be two feet of terracing, or did you think that the terracing would come out further?
So I did not propose any specific dimensions for the terracing. Um, the residential design guidelines talk about sloping and softening the transition, so it was a little subjective.
Right.
And it it could be within the the purview of the planning commission to to recommend.
Okay, okay. Um, other than that, I think I'm fine with uh, with the changes. Um, um, and I would, I would go ahead and approve, I'm sure.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Allen, Commissioner Bolton, your comments?
Yeah, I'm largely going to bite my tongue. This um, makes a bad taste in my mouth. I can't help but feel especially given the fact that these people have worked in these areas for decades and know our rules and our procedures. That somebody tried to get away with something. So, but that's a personal comment and doesn't really necessarily even belong here. There is no opportunity for terracing in the rear. A two-foot terrace is absurd with a six-foot change in elevation. It would be exceptionally steep. You'd need to fill in the entire area to make any kind of gentle or reasonable transition between this property's property line and the neighbors. So unfortunately, we are pinned in on this one. And uh, I'll wait for a proposed resolution here. Thanks.
Uh, I'm, I guess I thought this just was a matter that they were taking out a large tree, and then they they ended up doing a little more grading than they thought. It sounds like they actually started the work. Which I don't, you know, that really
Issue I have.
That really bothers me. Because I mean, uh, it's one thing to see that you have an opportunity because you were taking out this tree and there's a lot more grading. I even, I even understand the idea that you had the piece of machinery there, so you took a little more dirt, maybe. It's kind of pushing it, but 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 to start the construction without a permit? And then what? How did this, how did this even get found out? Was this, did somebody, was the the code enforcement officer get a complaint, and there was a red tag, or what?
So we had, um, my my understanding is that we had received, um, we had been in contact with one of the neighbors. Their patio was starting to to shift. Um, and when the building inspector went out there, he found that there wasn't adequate shoring in place. So the stop-work order was issued so that they can get an approved shoring plan to stabilize uh, the soil in the areas that had been excavated. So that's kind of how, that's kind of how all of that came to our attention.
But at that time, did the building inspector see that they were doing unpermitted work with regards to the, they put it in a foundation and in framing? Is that what happened? I mean, I'm just trying to establish the timeline here. I mean, I, I I don't want to be punitive, but but I feel like I I kind of have to be punitive. People are doing actual unpermitted work in terms of putting, putting building. I see the uh, the owners got their their hand up. Do you want to, can you give me some information here to help me out?
So, so it it is a little confusing. The the retaining walls we had submitted for a a permit for the retaining walls, and the retaining walls all had to be in place in order to to do the um, excavation for the existing house that was approved. Um, and the 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 shifting of the soil was based on that ro- that retaining wall that was already had to be in place to do the the general um, uh, house. So we didn't change the foot plan at all. Um, and the problem is we had submitted, a- and this, I got upset with this. Uh, uh, we had submitted the, and I didn't realize this, they had submitted these to get permitted, and they hadn't, they were taking a while, and they started digging prior to getting that that permit. But those walls were all, all those retaining walls hall had been proposed just to excavate for the existing plan that we had. Then they, when we got approval for those those retaining walls, we then suggested, hey, let's just keep this as a permanent backyard once we decided we could do the ADU in the backyard. And to to clarify, the structure didn't change. The um, what is the going to be the the ADU, that still had walls on the outside. It's just it had dirt in that room. So when they excavated back to get to that back retaining wall, they had, they took out that dirt at the same time. And then when the ADU became available, they said, well, rather than put the dirt back in, can we convert that space that's already present? Because because as I said, that space was in, was was already built into the structure. The foot plan of this house has not changed at all. Uh, i- i- it, we're not adding any extensions on or anything like that. We 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 covered in the patio, or I'm sorry, we're see, we're asking to cover in the patio, which was already mostly enclosed, but the rest of the building structure was already the structure. We didn't change the the foundation. We didn't, they didn't do any of that. It's just that when they excavated back, they had to excavate the backyard to an extent to build the structure.
And so there was, there was no work done that wasn't permitted on the structure, on the foundation, or the framing, or anything. Now, that that's not being changed.
Foot plan's the same, except for the patio.
Is is that staff's understanding?
So, not not entirely. Um, the foundation design on the south side of the house as constructed is slightly different because that space is now going to be living area, whereas previously it was not. So on the north side of the house, the layout as it exists today is the layout that was proposed for the master suite, which is they're asking to convert that into an ADU and enclose the patio. That work has not been done. But the excavation on the south side of the house, uh, where there was no living area before, and there was the mechanical room, that area has been completely excavated. Uh, the foundation walls, everything is in place, and it's slightly different than what was on the original plan.
Just because the grade was lowered, right?
Correct.
So things, so things had to, the footings were down lower, and the and the framing was, yeah, but the perimeter wasn't changed.
My
The footprint has not changed.
The footprint hasn't changed. So basically, they had to change their construction a little bit as a consequence of they had this deeper cut. So it it wasn't, it wasn't like they were going outside the perimeter or anything. It kind of sounds like there were just some mod- slight modifications because they had a deeper cut.
It's sort of like having some underfloor space that you weren't planning on using and then excavating it out into now usable living area.
But once they they excavated out prior to the construction of their footings, so then they had, the footings were down lower. They just were being constructed, the same footing is just being constructed at a lower depth. Is that correct?
It looks more like a foundation wall.
So they had, because it was deeper, they had to construct it in a different way.
Right.
Because it's going to have some retaining stuff.
I think, Mr. Chair, if I can just add, maybe try to simplify a little bit, because I think I get what the commission sort of driving at. And Marty, please, I'm going to try to simplify this and tell me if I simplify it incorrectly or correctly. It seems like the work, the reason this is an after-the-fact permit, because there are portions of this work that was done before it was permitted, like the additional excavation and the the changing of that perimeter or foundation wall. Uh, so that's the portion of this work that's after the fact, Marty. Is that, that's a fair simplification of that for the commission?
It is. I, and I have a graphic in the presentation where I can show you the before and after, so you can clearly see just how the foundation of that area changed, if you'd like to look at it.
I think that would be helpful.
Okay, can you see? Can you see this graphic?
Yes.
Can you see my cursor?
Mm-hmm.
So again, we're looking at the south side of the house. This was the mechanical crawl space. It had a, had a ceiling height of less than five feet, so it was not considered floor area. And then this, there was nothing kind of in this space. It was just just dirt. And then here's what's been constructed. So again, you can see where that grade was. And you can see how the foundation has been lowered.
They put the slab in. The slabs in there?
Yes, all of this, yes. The 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 shell, the core and shell of this is is in.
Okay, all right, that answers my question.
Marty, can I ask you a question while you have this on the page? Is that all right, Chair?
Yes, go ahead. Yeah.
Marty, can you zoom in on, is it possible we can zoom? I don't know. But can you zoom in on the left-hand side where the red line hits the property line? So I can see those numbers and such?
I think I can.
It's not a test of how good you are using uh, Acrobat.
Well, that's good, because I don't know how to
Go to the top left, and where it says view, click on view. Uh, go to zoom. There you go.
Thank you.
Oh, perfect. Yeah, that'll that'll work when you pan over. Okay, I just want to see that. Yeah, so that's, so the the line you had in red there was approximately uh, six feet lowered at that, at that retaining area.
Yeah, so again, you know, this grade was was always proposed to remain because there was a big tree right here.
Right, right.
Um, so this was supposed to remain at natural grade. Uh, and then the only sort of lower level space was that walkout patio from the master suite. And then there was a couple steps up to the top of the yard here.
Okay, thanks. That's very helpful.
Okay.
Well, you know, clearly, once they got that excavation done, they should have come in and started this permit process. And um, you know, this is kind of stuff that I don't like to see. It's just a flagrant disregard. I mean, I, you know, if they wouldn't have been, if the the building inspector hadn't noticed this, were they just going to finish it? I mean, what was the intent here?
Comment on that?
I I don't, I don't know. I mean, you know, it's, y- you know, you're you're, you were doing stuff without a permit, knowingly doing it. It's one thing to have a, take a tree out, and then all of a sudden, you got to do a little more grading. That's one thing. But right then and there, when you saw an opportunity, that's when you come in and you resubmit. You know, you don't have this after the fact, so. So I, you know, you want to say something, Eric?
Yes, please. We we did resubmit as soon as, so the the contractor graded that out, put it in the temporary shoring. It's still temporary shoring. So then, when we uh, came back uh, and saw that he had excavated it, and he was going to use that to build the house, we came to Marnie, and uh, Marnie, I think uh, you remember, as soon as the tree was out, and as soon as we knew we could do an ADU, we came in. Now, the contractor did pour that slab lower. Uh, but uh, that wasn't in my direction, but it did get poured lower because the grade was lower back there. We did apply for the ADU, uh, you know, quick.
Eric, 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 who who made the plan changes? Because plan change had to be made. That contractor had to be following plans. You guys have changed, you guys have changed the interior floor plan and changed the foundation. I mean, there were, who who did that work? Did you do that work?
That's true, I did.
You did that?
Yeah.
Well, I don't, you know, I don't know. It just seems to me, you know, that that it's it's just pretty obvious what had to happen there. Everybody knows. You know, the contractor knew, you knew, they had to do this stuff. This stuff had to be inspected. How, it wasn't inspected, was it? Those footings weren't inspected, were they?
That's contractor. He, he is the one that uh, did that.
They report, if they report after the fact, I mean, they they weren't inspected. I mean, you know, so, I don't know. What, I I'd like to hear, I'm I'm, how's the rest of commissioners feel about this now that we have this? Commissioner Locke?
Yeah, I definitely think we need to see the project data table, given the changes.
Okay, I I think we ought to continue this personally. Get the data tables. You know, I just think at this point, we we're not really, I'm not in a position to make a decision about this. I make a motion, we continue this item.
Second.
Okay, motion is made.
Mr. Chair, as as part of your motion, can uh, can we request? Let us know what it is you'd like to come back with.
Well, we want, we want to have the uh, the site. We have the site data. We don't, we don't have that, that, we don't have that, at the very least. Any other issues that the the commissioners want to?
Could, could I? No, but I'd like to see us do a site visit at the next hearing also.
Okay, yeah, we'd like the opportunity for a site physicist. Okay. All right. Okay, um, is there any more discussion?
Mr. Chair, I did see that the wits were raising their
All right, all right. You want to, do you want to say something, Mr. Witt?
Well, it it has been, at least from my knowledge, uh, that the inspection came with the foundation. They they've inspected it all along. Um, the submittal for the the initial change in plans was was um, uh, in September of two thousand twenty-one. So some of the the complexity of this is, they've been trying not to do anything that they can undo, but at the same time, uh, the they, it's been very complex, but we submitted back in September. And because of COVID and different things like this, we've been trying to get this on for four months to this committee. But when we did volume initially, the volume uh, consultant made it an error. And so for the last four months, he was out with COVID, then someone else was out with COVID, then someone else. So literally, I I want you to understand, we've been, I've been trying as hard as I can, like, pushing everybody to try to get all these things to go through. And it's been since September. And um, it it, the the cost that that we've incurred because we we couldn't really progress with the plans, and we've been waiting. I, it's it's been, it's been tough. And as I said, we've tried really hard. As soon as we made a plan, we submitted. As soon as there was any change, we submitted.
Okay, I I I understand. I'm very sympathetic to the challenge you've had during this construction, but I think one of the things I want to confirm is that, you know, the, there was an inspection done on those footings prior to their being poured. So I'd like to see that before this comes back. And a site visit, so that's the direction, I think, uh, committee that's the direction, I think. Commissioner Dels?
So is there a general contractor on this project?
Yes.
And who is it?
I also wanted to address Stephanie Locke was concerned about the tree and I want you to know that two tree limbs fell in our neighbor's house, threw their skylight into their bedroom, and they wrote a letter about the tree as well. And the forester came and assessed it and decided it had beetle rot damage. And so that tree was officially not doing well.
Yeah, I think there was, the city forester. It sounds like the city forester did an assessment of the tree and it was an approved removal of that tree. There were, there were, there were permits for that, so that that's not an issue here. Okay, we have, is there any more discussion regarding this this motion for continuation?
Now, Michael, I'm I'm going to be supportive of it too. Yeah, I'm not sure we're going to, I'm back to the, we are where we are comment that I started with. I don't know what additional information is going to change that, but I do feel like the story we've been told so far, it's just really hard to put together. And I need it to be put together better.
Well, that's the direction, the direction we're asking of staff. We have one issue. We want to know about the site coverage. We want to have that. That hasn't been presented to us. We want, I want to, I want to know, you know, if there was an inspection done on those footings. That needs to be established. You know, we need to get some kind of timeline, what's going on here.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I was going to suggest one of the things we can come back with next time is a timeline, because while I do appreciate Mr. Whit's comment about this taking a while, there's always, you know, two sides to the story about why things take time in a development project. So we can certainly lay that out so the commission has the full story of why where we've gone through this whole project.
We we just need that before we can make a fair decision on this. And I, believe me, I I want to make a fair decision. But I want to, I want to have a clear understanding of of what the timeline was before I do that. And I'm sure the other commissioners feel the same too, so. Okay, is there any more discussion?
Brief comment.
Yes.
You know, this, this gives the owners and designer and contractor an opportunity to present us with a narrative that we can understand. Something intelligible that will help inform us so we can make the best possible decision here, because right now it's a bit confusing. And as I've already stated, it's not a bad case. So I'd like that to go away. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Bolton. Okay, any more discussion? All right, hearing done, roll call, please.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolton?
Yes.
Commissioner Dels?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Chair LaPage?
Yes, I'm wishing to continue this item, as as carried. Okay, I think that concludes the public hearings this evening. All right, we have the director's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As always, starting by saying great job tonight to the commission. Also, a big kudos to Marnie for doing double duty. Thanks, Marnie. Great job. Couple updates for you. As you know, in June, we had two workshops, two evening community workshops for the Design Traditions 1.5 project. Those were really, really well attended. And I was super impressed with just the level of of effort and thought that the residents that came out put into that. We saw a lot of people at those events that we don't normally see come out to planning commission meetings or city council meetings or these public meetings we have. So there was great engagement. The first night for residential focus, we had forty-eight people in the room and about twenty people on Zoom. And then for the commercial district, as we expected, it was slightly less attended, twenty-seven people in the room and ten people on the Zoom. And the Zoom was an important, important aspect to that, because we ran the Zoom rooms like virtual tables, essentially. I had my staff on laptops in the room. And as we were doing these tabletop shred exercises, my staff was doing them on the Zoom computer. We do breakout rooms. So people that were on the Zoom got to participate with the same pictures, moving things around, saying what was consistent. So it was really, it was a really great workshop. We're going to be putting out an online survey next week. So this is sort of like phase two of our first round of community engagement for, you know, hopefully folks that couldn't come and join us. It's a different set of questions. Some of them teeing off of things where we realized we might want some more information after the workshop. And some of them were things we just didn't have time to do, you know, the constraints of a two-night, three-hour, a night workshop. So we'll be sending that out here in the next week. That'll run for a couple of weeks. And then once we have that information, we'll meld that with what we have been analyzing from all the great input we got from those workshops. So we're working with Winter and Company, our consultant that prepared the design guidelines twenty years ago. We've been sort of like harmonizing and synthesizing all of the information we've been getting. And the next step for us is to create the direction for the project. So we're going slow on this. We're trying to get as much community input as possible. We're not going to be drafting the design guidelines after this first round. We're going to create essentially a a direction paper or an outline of what we think we heard and learned from the community, what maybe needs to be massaged in design guidelines. Is there something that needs to be stronger or more clear? Is there something that's totally missing? And so what our next community workshop, which right now is on target for the end of August or the start of September, will be focused on that. We'll be coming with the direction, asking those same community members, here's what we heard from you. Did we get it right? So we're excited about the next steps. We're still on target, March 2023, April 2023, for adoption hearings. Assuming nothing goes sideways, but we were making really good progress, tons of great feedback. And so we will be to this commission probably shortly after that direction meeting in August. So then we'll start having our public hearings on on that and getting more feedback from the commission and the HRB and the Forest and Beach Commission and the and the city council. So really in the community aspect, our community input phase of this project right now, but soon enough we'll be shifting to public hearings. So this commission and our others can have their input as well. So really excited about the progress on that project. Another exciting thing, we've, as of June eighteenth, I am now fully staffed here in community planning and building, have zero vacancies. Eleven total positions, including mine, which is up two from where we were before I started here. So that's very exciting. Our new code, our new code compliance coordinator, Aaron Campbell, started on the eighteenth. We've already begun some weekend code compliance, which is great for us, something we haven't really had on a regular basis in the past. Our major focuses for the additional code compliance are going to be illegal short-term rentals and construction on the weekends without a permit or construction at all on Sundays. So we're very excited to have a better presence. And, you know, our our mantra is not enforcement, it's compliance. I mean, we're still going to be taking the approach of customer service, trying to educate people and bring them into compliance. If we're forced, you know, if our hand is forced after a couple of, you know, nice asks to issue citations, we will. And we've actually done that already here in the last month. We've issued some financial hardship citations of thousand dollars a pop to short-term rentals that that would not comply with our orders. So we are taking it seriously. And I think that that's very important. The next thing, just to share with you really quick, I'm going to put a graphic up on the screen so you can see screen two. So we are, we're marching right along on our scanning and digitizing project. This is a a map that just represents all the parcels that have been scanned or now digital. So effectively, we've done now a third of the city, which is really exciting. So all the parcels in blue. Now you can go to our GIS map, click on your parcel and get all of those historic documents. You don't have to come in. And I keep saying that you can, it can be eleven o'clock at night in your pajamas, eating ice cream, and you can check out your historic property file. So we're very excited about the progress on that project. And then the last thing I'll tell you, just to get you excited about something, is over the next six months, you should expect to see a handful of long-range planning initiatives starting to come your way. You know, that was one of my focuses when I got here. I shared with you is to get us back on track on actually doing some long-range planning. You know, we brought on Catherine Wallace, who's our long-range planner. The things you can look forward to seeing in the next six months, the design traditions and zoning code update, I already talked about that. The historic context statement update is going through our HRB right now. That's actually not something you all have to approve, but we probably will bring it by. You just, you can be aware it's going on. It does dovetail with the work you do here. So I think it's important for you to see that, but it's it's a sorely overdue update to bring that context statement twenty years into the, further into the future. We've started work on our housing feasibility study, which will feed our housing element update at the end of December 2023. So we'll be sharing that information with you over the next six months. Evan and I began work this last week on our ADU ordinance, which I'm extremely excited about. We, once we sort of have our rough skeleton of the, our wish list, you know, having taken notes, copious notes over the previous planning commission meetings about some of these potential loopholes that we want to try to plug. We're going to then engage our our city attorney so we can get a an ordinance written pretty quickly and then start going through the process of bringing it to you and ultimately city, city council. And then, as you know, you've already seen it once, but we're working on our wireless ordinance, which hopefully will be back to you in August. That's our 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 goal right now. Our stated goal is to be back in August with the draft to have a conversation, but at the very worst, we'll be back in September. We're going to try for August, though. So lots of exciting long-range planning stuff going on. So some heady planning work coming your way, not just processing development projects, which are important also, but I'm excited for this team to start looking at some of our long-range planning initiatives as well.
Brandon, did I hear that the pit's coming back next month?
I don't know if it's going to be coming next month. We just, we just received those updated designs at the beginning of this week. So we'll, yeah, that would be pretty darn quick. But they are available. We we keep them on our website and I'm happy to send them to anybody else that wants to see them, but they are there. And so we'll, we'll try to get it back as quickly as possible, but yeah, there's, there's a lot of other stuff going on.
And have we heard when the Carmel Resort Inn is going to be coming back to us at this point?
You know, I don't, they do have a, they have an application that's submitted. It's a, it's a far reduced scope application. They've, they've kind of changed their approach. And so we're working with the applicant to see how they want to handle that. So we don't have a target yet.
Hey, Brandon. I've, I find that for normal residential stuff, getting a packet on a Friday for a Wednesday meeting, it's okay. But I could use more time on some bigger things or that there's a lot, a lot of things. And would, and I think we just heard some in the public ask for more time. I guess it was just from one person, but for the wireless ordinance, they're asking for a month to to look at it. I'd be supportive of that. I'd rather get it right than fast. And and I think on the pit and some of these bigger projects, personally, the more advanced stuff we can get, the better I think we'll we'll be, so.
Yeah, I I couldn't agree to agree with you more, Commissioner Dels. I, you know, we, for example, the historic context statement, we just sent the working draft to the HRB two weeks ahead of time. And so that, that's, we're going to continue that model. I mean, for an ordinance, it's coming for, you know, essentially a workshop to the planning commission. I don't know if a full month is needed because it's not an adoption hearing. It's really meant to be a workshop. If it was, you know, a final adoption, maybe a month, but you know, certainly two or three weeks, I think is is a bare minimum that we we would never send something like that the Friday before or the Thursday before, the Wednesday before. It's going to be more than, more than four or five days. I I completely agree with you.
Thank you.
Okay, is that it, Brandon?
That's all I have, sir. Thank you.
Okay, our next regular meeting is August tenth. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night. We're adjourned.
Thank you.